Good evening, welcome. We just returned from executive session. We're back in open session for the September ninth, two thousand nineteen Board of Selectmen meeting. If you'd please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. Sam, do you want to read the first one?
Sure. Whereas Stephen Swenson of Boy Scout troop twenty thirty-eight, excuse me, has successfully completed the qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, teamwork, and requires strong goal setting. And Stephen Swenson met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and of Falmouth. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a court of honor toward its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas Stephen Swenson is now an Eagle Scout with all the rank, with all its rank and privilege, now therefore we, Megan English Braga, Douglas C. Jones, Douglas H. Jones, excuse me, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Susan L. Moran, and Samuel H. Patterson, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim Saturday, September fourth, two thousand nineteen, as Stephen Swenson Day throughout Falmouth.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Stephen, do you want to come on up and tell us a little bit about what your project was and share some of that with us?
Thank you for having me. So for my Eagle project, Oak Grove Cemetery, I cleaned and restored about thirty-five to forty gravestones, Civil War era. And we mainly focused on the Kathleen Bates grave. That was our main focus of the night there. And we ended up restoring it. It looks beautiful. We did it last summer in two thousand eighteen, and all the gravestones look really well.
That's great.
Thank you.
And how many people don't, you're not done yet. How many people were able to get, to help you with the project?
We had about, collectively about eleven or twelve people with like thirty-nine and a half hours of collective work.
That's wonderful. Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No, thank you very much, though. Appreciate the, all the work you, Eagle Scouts have been doing around town.
I know, we need like, you know, about fifty more and we can finish off our list of to-do projects. So, thank you so much. It's a really wonderful project that will have a lasting legacy. Did you take any before-after pictures?
Yeah, actually I do have some. So, one of my favorite pictures that I have here, find it. So this is the Kathleen Bates grave. It's rather small, but this is one of the before-after, or before picture here. We have after right here. The whole side right here was covered in moss, and we were able to clean it fresh and new. It looks brand new like it was just placed there. And this one here, this was about halfway through, and we were able to get all into the crevices and get out that whole cross and everything on those.
Well, that's wonderful.
And then there, so Kathleen Bates up here. And this one down here.
Excellent.
That's great. Thank you so much. What a great project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. I have a second proclamation for National Recovery Month, which is September two thousand nineteen. Proclamation, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and wellness, and whereas we know addiction is a chronic but treatable disease, that treatment is effective and recovery is possible, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas community support and reducing stigma significantly contributes to an individual's ability to achieve and maintain recovery and contribute in positive ways both locally and around the nation, and whereas the town of Falmouth Commission on Substance Use wishes to honor individuals in recovery as well as allies of recovery, now therefore we, Megan English Braga, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Susan L. Moran, and Samuel H. Patterson, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth by the authority vested in us, do hereby officially proclaim the month of September two thousand nineteen as National Recovery Month in Falmouth, and call upon the people of Falmouth to observe this month with appropriate program, events, and activities that support this year's Recovery Month theme, which is, Together We Are Stronger. In witness thereof, we have herein to set our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed on this ninth day of September.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And I know we have the chair of the substance, excuse me, the Commission on Substance Use here. Beverly, if you want to come up and just talk a little bit about some of the events that are planned for this month?
Thank you. Yeah, so we have two events that are-
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Beverly Costasiovala, and I am the co-chair of the Falmouth Commission on Substance Use. So we have a couple of, besides having the proclamation today. We have The Art of Recovery. It's a show at the Falmouth Arts Center. It started on September first, it goes through the twenty-fourth, but on the twentieth, we're going to have a reception from five to seven. It's open and free to the public, and a couple of the artists who donated their pieces, who are in recovery, are going to talk about how art has helped them in that recovery process. So-
And where is that?
It's at the Falmouth Arts Guild, the Falmouth Arts Center on Gifford Street.
What time?
So the reception is five to seven.
Thank you.
Yeah, on the twentieth.
But the installation is there?
The installation is there. You can go and see it now. And actually what it is, is there was a show in Osterville last month, and that, those artists brought their pieces over. But the, the Arts Center also does a class with Recovering Champions, which is a recovery home, and they bring the, the people that are staying there over to the Arts Center, and they're, they're working with them on pieces of art, and so some of their work is there also. It's really amazing, so.
Could you just tell us about the commission, just briefly, for anyone who doesn't know what you guys do?
Yep. And then I'll just, first I'll talk about this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we have one more, and this is for anybody out there who's an employer, the role of employers in the substance use epidemic on Cape Cod. It's an outreach and education workshop, and it's going to be at the library at, on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, in the Herman Conference Room from four to five fifteen. We have the Barnstable County Human Services data people coming in to talk about, to talk about the role of employers, and also there's an online toolkit that they can download, so they'll find out more information about that. And I'm going to leave these posters out front, so if anybody wants to take one. So the Falmouth Substance Use Commission meets the fourth Thursday of every month at five-thirty upstairs at the Rec Center. We're a small commission, we're five, and we're, we have an opening for one more commissioner, so if anyone's interested. But we also invite the general public to come and give us input as to, you know, these are the kinds of things that we try to plan out, and we want it to benefit the whole community. I'm sure everyone here knows someone who has either passed from addiction or suffers from the, from the disease of addiction, and, and as the month says, we want everyone in the community to come together to, to help us with this. So come join us at our meeting. It's a short and sweet meeting, and we're a great bunch of people, so, and a very diverse bunch of people, so please come and join us.
Great.
And I'll leave these out front. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And just to echo that, it's a great opportunity to go to those meetings to kind of find out about things that are going on in the community in terms of services, or groups, or, you know, ways that people can reach out if they're dealing with addiction in their families. A lot of things that I think you don't even know about until you go, and you hear that these resources are right in our backyard. So really great opportunity, and like all committee meetings in the town, those meetings are all open. You just have to look and take a look at their agenda, which is always posted, and then you can attend any of those meetings to hear about those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Brown, do you have anything for recognition this week?
Well, I attended the wake for former retired fire lieutenant Doc Henry this week, and just want to make a mention of him and his service to our town. He's a, he's a good man, and we're going to miss him. Another thing I wanted to recognize is Chief Dunn is riding, just finished riding his bicycle for four days from New York City, from, I think it was Yankee Stadium-
Yes.
-to Fenway Park to raise money for families of fallen, so police. So it's a pretty incredible ride, even for a young guy.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty impressive. I think he's, yeah, he's really taken to the writing for, he's done a couple of events that really fundraise for sort of important causes like that, so.
Yeah. Very, very nice.
This Thursday isn't the-
I was going to, I have an announcement if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, speaking of rides, and to benefit, but this Thursday, September the twelfth, the wounded warrior, wounded soldier bicycle ride starts from North Falmouth between nine and nine-thirty, goes all the way to West, to Woods Hole, and then returns. And traditionally, we've come out and been at all of the road crossings on the bike path to kind of encourage them along and let them know that we're there supporting them. So that's an opportunity this Thursday. They'll, as I said, start up at North Falmouth around nine-thirty, and will be passing through the various road crossings. Many groups will, have actually organized to provide delegations at each of those crossings. So, but anybody's welcome to do that.
So maybe Doug can get out there, Falmouth Academy, get the kids out there. Yeah.
This year it looks like it's going to be cloudy but dry, which wasn't the case, I think, last year or the last couple of years.
Oh, no.
So, great year to go out and support. Did you have something else?
Yeah, second, notice that the police night out is October first from five-thirty to seven-thirty, so you might want to put that on your calendar, remember to go to it. It's right behind the police station, but it's a great event, and it's a good time to kind of see some of the capabilities that our police force has pulled together to support us in protecting our safety and security.
Great opportunity to support the police, and it's definitely family-friendly. They have activities for kids.
Absolutely. Have a dunk tank.
Yes, exactly.
Thanks for mentioning that. I wonder where you're at. I was going to do that as well. I'm the water boy there.
Excellent. Any other announcements?
No.
I think that's it.
All right, now's an opportunity for public comment. Public comment is a period where we hear from individuals who are here tonight about something that is not on the agenda, so if you're here for something that's on the agenda, you'll have the opportunity to address that later. This is for any item not on the agenda. You have up to two minutes, and you come up, and you can introduce yourself, speak for two minutes, and we try to cap the entire period of public comment around ten minutes so we can move our meeting along. Is there anyone here for public comment? No? Okay, great. All right, moving on to summary of actions. License, approve application for a change of manager of a farmer brewery license and common victual license, Bad Martha's Brewery located eight seventy-six East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth. Is someone here for the applicant? Or the applicant and someone else, come on up. Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Matt Terry from Amen Clower here in town, representing the applicant.
Hi, I'm Josh Flanders. I'm the applicant, and I'm part of the Bad Martha team.
Great, welcome. Does anyone here from the board have any questions upon reading that?
I guess so, there's a different manager for the past four days, is that the case?
Yes, our brewer Jacoby Reed has been the manager. He was really on site for the whole construction phase, so we had made him the manager during that time. I handle more of the front of the house operations and have been doing that on the island since two thousand fifteen at our Egretown location, so it's more suitable for me to be the manager. I'm there later in the day during all hours of operation.
So you have had experience being a manager of a liquor establishment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I think we had all approvals from the relevant departments that needed to weigh in. Any other questions?
So I'll just reiterate that we tell every manager just to be aware that, of course, that means that you're responsible for any of the violations that might occur from alcohol point of view, even if you're not on the premises.
Understood.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move approval of the change of manager of the farmer brewery license and the common victual license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Good luck.
Congratulations on your opening. I guess it was pretty popular, huh?
Yes, thank you. Hopefully we are going to be a positive part of the community.
Yeah, nice building.
Thank you.
Very nice, thank you. Actually, I don't see that in here. Okay. Next, we have approved application for a change of manager of a common victual license and automatic amusement device license, the T Room located at one ninety-six Crystal Springs Avenue, North Falmouth. Any, is the applicant present?
I'm representing the applicant.
Okay.
This just stems from the Pacella Zengemo family formalizing their operations in a limited liability company. So I believe that Clive is the victualer and the holder of the amusement device records per town records, so we're just updating it to the LLC that has taken over operations from Clive.
Okay, and I know that Ms. Pacella has been, has been running and has experience. Does anybody have any other questions?
I guess it's just the legality, right?
Yep. Do you have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have approved application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license for Samaritans of Cape Cod and the islands, Bocchi Festival, Falmouth Academy, Seven High Hill Drive, Saturday, nine fourteen, two thousand nineteen. Any questions? Is this applicant present? Okay, I think we've had this.
Yeah, it's just if they were here, we could hear what, a plug for it, but I'm going to move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next, we have vote to accept donation from New England Endurance Events in the amount of one thousand four hundred dollars to the Beach Department donation account.
Move approval.
Second.
With thanks, that's wonderful, thank you. Is anyone here for this matter? No? Okay, well, we thank you wherever you are. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved letter of mass, letter, excuse me, to Mass Housing regarding forty Shore Street Affordable Housing Site Approval and Project Eligibility. Mr. Suso or Mr. Johnson stop?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Selectmen have a copy of the draft letter indicating the site approval application and affirming it, which I have, would be the signatory of in draft form, subject to the concurrence of the board, and I know Mr. Galasso is here to make some additional comments, if that's the desire of the board.
Please, thank you, Mr. Galasso.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chairman, Michael Galasso, assisting Mark Bogosian on this forty-B on Shore Street. So just a couple of comments, I know you've got a full agenda. We just have a few issues with, with the letter. First, I want to let you know where we're at in the process, so we're asking for site approval for Mass Housing, and this is part of that process, approving the location and the conceptual design for the project. As you know, the location's forty Shore Street. We think it's a great location for affordable housing. It's located close to the schools, to the library, transit, employment center. The concept that we have, I want to mention that we've met a number of times with the neighbors to get them involved in the project. We started with just a blank piece of paper. We didn't go to them with some concepts or anything. We just started with a site survey, got their input on the density of what we should be doing, and the overall concept out of a series of meetings that we have with the neighbors. Our goal was to make sure they were well-informed and well-involved in the process before we actually made a, a formal application. We talked with them about the density and the overall concept for the project, and what image they wanted to see. We also had initial meeting with Mass Housing, and we talked to them about initially combining the affordable with a combination of for sale and rentals. They discouraged that, and they encouraged that we develop mostly three-bedroom units. We did discuss possibly converting the existing building that's there into two one-bedroom units. They thought there might be a conflict with that, because as you know, we're supposed to make the affordable units the same size, the same number of bedrooms as the market-rate units. So we met with town staff. They encouraged us to take a look at smaller units, one- and two-bedroom units, but obviously we have a conflict between our housing production plan and some of the recommendations in there, and what Mass Housing was looking to get, and their desire for three-bedroom and all units to be similar in size. So the economics of this project, which was mentioned in the letter, is that the smaller ten-unit or less forty-B projects are very difficult to, to finance and require a lot of subsidy. Mark is trying to develop this project without any local or state subsidy, and that's possible because of the location of this site on Shore Street and what Mark believes he can obtain for sales prices from the market-rate units. So the sales price and the profit that could be derived from that offsets the cost of the affordable units. Friday, we met with town and Mass Housing staff on the site. We had a nice meeting. We discussed a number of things and changes that we made to the plans, which you see in front of you tonight. Town staff wanted to make sure that the affordable units are as energy-efficient as the new units, and we agreed that they should at least meet Energy Star for Home criteria, which is more stringent than the stretch code, that we would hire a HERS raider to rate those buildings, both the renovated building and the new buildings, and that we'd look at adding possible solar. We did add garages to both the affordable homes. We added first-floor bedrooms to both affordable homes, and we discussed saving the, some of the trees that are on the site. So we've made those changes to the site plan and to the house plans, and that's what you have in front of you, so those changes were made between Friday afternoon and, and today. So although we support the conclusion of the housing production plan, we do need a mix of housing, both sizes and types. There's a, a decrease number of young adults and children in our town, but we see that increasing. How do we increase the number of young adults and families in our community? By increasing the number of affordable homes that fits their needs, and most of their needs are for two- and three-bedroom units. Most of the three-bedroom homes are locations close to schools, libraries, shops, and transit, which is what we have at forty Shore Street. I know in my neighborhood, which is on Lakeview Avenue, right downtown here, I've seen the increase in the number of young adults and young homeowners. Just an example, there are two teachers that will live in, basically next door to us, in a rented house. They had two children. They ended up moving out of the rented house and moving down the street on Lakeview into a home that they bought. I see that happening more and more. There are more young people living in our downtown area, which I think is great. So the housing production plan also talks about the loss of units between two thousand and two thousand and sixteen, and the conversion to seasonal use. So we lost mostly some of the older homes and the affordable ones. Forty Shore Street helps fill that gap. Yes, we need, there's a need for smaller rental units. The housing production plan also notes a need for affordable homes. As you may know, in addition to forty Shore Street, Mark and I are working on two projects, the Clippership Apartments, which will be adding ten two-bedroom units, in McGansett Crossing, which recently got financing from the state, which is a combination of two- and three-bedroom rentals, too. So we understand the need, both from a homeownership standpoint and from a rental standpoint.
Mike, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you, I just want to be cognizant that we have a hearing that has to start at seven-thirty.
Okay.
So I just want to ask the board, in general, given, because we had a lot of information upfront about this, did, so you have some specific edits to the-
Yes.
-to the letter that you would like to propose?
Right, so we suggest that the letter of the Mass Housing be revised to support the current, which you have in front of you, plan, which is a combination of affordable and market-rate projects, with the existing house being a three-bedroom, renovated into a three-bedroom, energy-efficient, and that the new affordable unit also be a three-bedroom, with one of the bedrooms being on the ground floor. That's the plan that's in front of you tonight. That's what we'd like you to support and send up to Mass Housing.
Thank you. Any que-
I'm going to need to have more discussion of that than we, at this time, I think we probably need to move to the hearing.
Okay. So if you don't mind, I-
I think our staff has a very different point of view.
Yeah, we can hear some conversation. Peter, did you have a?
Yeah, I guess I, I would put the question to Mike. There are two ways we could go, is perhaps have, put this on an agenda again, but if it's really time-sensitive, another approach might be for the board to authorize the town manager to send a letter with updated comments, and we'd be happy to take a look at the, at the updated plan and revise the letter as, as is appropriate. I don't think it's necessary for the town, for the Board of Selectmen and the developer to be at a hundred percent consensus, but certainly we can update it based on new facts.
What's your feeling about that?
I'm more comfortable with that, I believe.
Okay. And so what I would say is, we'll leave it to your, if you'd like, we can go in that direction and authorize that to take place. We can also, if that process isn't working, we do meet next week, so if it seems like we need a little bit more input from the board in that process, we have a very short upcoming date for a meeting. So if that works for you?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I would move that the, our administration work on developing a letter that takes into account some of the recommendations we've made, but I think at this standing point, I still like the idea of concern with some all-bedroom apartments, so.
Yeah, not to belabor too much, the, the one thing I would add, and Mike hit the nail on the head, there's apparently DHCD wants us to create a housing production plan and then wants us to ignore that plan.
Go with their-
So I would, I would continue to include in our letter that we are going to continue to encourage one- and two-bedroom homeownership units. It may not be feasible for this project, that doesn't mean we can't recommend.
Right, we're appropriate.
Good, good.
Do I have a second to Mr. Jones's?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, we have a seven-thirty hearing. Let me read the public notice. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under section two forty seventy-seven Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaw on a request for shellfish aquaculture permit by Daniel Ward, Ward Aqua Farms LLC, fifty-one North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, Mass. zero-two-five-five-six. Request for this permit was received on July twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, in the office of the Board of Selectmen. Said hearing will be held on Monday, September ninth, two thousand nineteen, at seven-thirty PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall located at fifty-nine Town Hall Square in Falmouth, Massachusetts. Application is for a permit to grow eastern oysters in a suspended aquaculture site identified as Site B in the Falmouth Statement of Qualifications issued on seven-five, two thousand nineteen, within a perimeter of approximately half an acre located in Eel Pond, approximately two-hundred feet west of Washburn Island. The mooring to be rented from the town of Falmouth is to be located within this half-acre site in an estimated water depth of eight feet at mean low tide. A copy of the aquaculture license application is on file at the office of the Board of Selectmen. Licensing Board, Megan English Braga Chair, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Susan L. Moran, Samuel H. Patterson, publication date Friday, August twenty-third, Falmouth Enterprise. Welcome.
Good evening.
And if you just want to introduce yourself, and then we'll have, I see we have our, Mr. Martinson is here as well, so.
My name is Daniel Ward, and I live in North Falmouth, and I've been farming shellfish in McGansett and Fiddler's Cove since two thousand eleven, and I've been a part of the, the town of Falmouth's plan to use shellfish as, as part of a nitrogen remediation demonstration pilot program, and I've been involved since the beginning of that process many years ago, and I'm now on a, on the Shellfish Advisory Committee to the Board of Selectmen, and through that process, I've been aware and apprised of the whole statement of qualifications and the selection and the integration with wild harvesters throughout the entire process, and, and therefore I thought it was a good time to apply, to be one of the, the applicants to, to help partner with the town to clean up the estuaries.
Great, thank you. And I know that we have, oh, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Just to point out that I believe that the applicants we are receiving tonight are people that we've actually, our review committee has invited to apply, so they've gone through the review process by our, the agriculture, the agriculture committee, and have met those qualifications that they reviewed, and then coming to us with their application.
Yes.
Which are quite extensive.
Yes, I mean, the applications are, are very thorough. Peter, did you just want to speak any more to that process, just because I know you've been sort of really part of that, this new procedure that we're kind of getting?
Sure, Selectman Jones, you know, said it pretty well. We've been on a long journey to engage a public-private partnership to both promote We've been on a long journey to engage a public-private partnership to both promote nitrogen removal through aquaculture and also seek to achieve some other benefits for the community, including new commercial opportunities for local business persons, improving conditions for ongoing wild harvest shellfish. And we issued a Statement of Qualifications, so this is a first. These series of hearings and aquaculture permits that the board is being asked to consider tonight represent the first time that the town reached out to solicit qualified aquaculture farmers, and the terms of the license agreement that we will be entering is also different because it's not just responding to, can we have access to this land? And the board's saying, well, if it doesn't interfere, yes, you can. This is actually going to be an agreement where we're saying, we have some minimum standards that we're asking these farmers to essentially put in enough shellfish and remove enough nitrogen that we know that the town is, you know, getting as much nitrogen out of that site as we can reasonably expect. So, we have three-year licenses and some standards to go along with these.
And do we want to hear from our shellfish warden? Did you just want to speak to this?
Hi, good evening. Chuck Martinson, Shellfish Constable and Deputy Director of Marine and Environment. I think the only thing that I would add is that it has been a long process. It's been a long time to get to this point, well over two years, and committees, public hearings, a number of different venues. But what I did want to point out is that there will, we realize, although, you know, there has been a lot of information publicized about it, that there might continue to be some questions or concerns, and to that end, we've actually arranged to do another presentation. There's been many, but another one at 9:00 AM on Sunday, September 15, at the Waco Bay National Estuary Reserve. So, I just want to kind of pass that along as well, if there's any information we could get out. It's been pretty extensive as of late, so. That's the only thing I have to add.
We'll stick around because there's-
Madam Chair, if I could just add, so we had a committee of four individuals with some expertise in this area that reviewed the applications received and made a recommendation to the town manager, so the three applicants before you were all selected for the three sites.
Okay. Any questions from the board before we hear from the public, or any comments from the board about this particular applicant?
Just that, I think you came before us a year or so ago on a different grant, and I think at the time you said you, when you would start up a new operation, you'd kind of do it slowly at the start and work your way up, but does this one call for a more full-force implementation to get started, or do you still have that kind of build-it-slowly process? Did I even have the right person that-
The last time I came before you for a new license was 2014, but that sounds like a rational approach, I probably said. And in this case, this is a nitrogen remediation.
Right.
The goal is nitrogen removal, right? And cleaning up the estuaries. So, there's a given size that's the maximum that we can do, and so, there's definitely a building to that given size, to be able to make sure that it's done sustainably and that it can be handled, and that the format and the ability to get out there and process the gear and work with it is something that can be handled by the farm, but also in the sense that we want to be able to maximize the amount of nitrogen that's removed. So, I think there's a give and take between, and that's why this is a really novel private public partnership, in the sense that we're working with the town, we're working with the Department of Marine Environmental Services to rent equipment, and so the amount of equipment that's available is going to influence the type of gear that's used and the amount of animals that are produced and when they're deployed and how they're deployed. So, it's really a good partnership between two different groups to determine what level of implementation there'll be. We're not really leaning towards anything this fall in terms of in the water, not to say that that can't happen. This is much more leaning towards a spring 2020.
So, you'll have a little more time to gear up for it?
Well, yeah, and to make sure that everything is implemented correctly. We don't want anything floating away, you don't want any markers to be inappropriate, so we just, we want to make sure that it's really rolled out in a way that's sustainable for the long term.
Right.
Great, thank you. So, as far as individuals who are here, is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of this applicant? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
I would say that this is, well, my finding for this hearing would be, this is right along the lines of what we've been moving forward to. I'm thrilled that we have three applicants that have been found to be favorable, and I find that this applicant is also favorable, and I would move that we award the permit for Daniel Ward, Ward Aqua Farms, to Site, identified Site B.
And just to clarify, that we have three applicants for three sites.
Yes, and we're going to do those each separately.
Right. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second public hearing for the same process. This is, let's see if I can find the right one. Okay, public hearing notice, the Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Sections 24077 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaw on a request for a shellfish aquaculture permit by Mary M. Murphy, Falmouth Shellfish Cooperative, 33 Turner Road, East Falmouth, 02536. Request for this permit was received on July 26, 2019, in the office of the Board of Selectmen. Said hearing will be held on Monday, September 9, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, located at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. Application is for a permit to grow eastern oysters in a suspended aquaculture site identified as Site A in the Falmouth Statement of Qualifications issued 7/5/2019 within a perimeter of approximately half an acre located in Eel Pond, approximately 150 feet west of Washburn Island. The mooring to be rented from the Town of Falmouth is to be located within this half-acre site in an estimated water depth of six feet at mean low tide. A copy of the aquaculture license application is on file at the office of the Board of Selectmen. Licensing Board, Falmouth Board of Selectmen, publication date, excuse me, publication date, Friday, August 23, Falmouth Enterprise. Welcome, how are you?
I am well. I'm Mary Murphy, and I represent the Falmouth Shellfish Cooperative. It's a group of three of us that have been involved with aquaculture for a good while now, the longest, one of our members is the longest-standing holder of an aquacult, I'm sorry, the second longest-standing holder of an aquaculture permit in Falmouth, but one of the more recent, in the recent years. Pretty much everything was covered by Dan, so besides like personal experience and the rest of my crew's experience, so kind of if anything you guys want to know, it's all the same, part of the same program, just different sites.
Any questions? I know we got a part of this, as was noted earlier, each applicant provided a very lengthy and thorough application and information for us to review, and all three of these applicants have quite a bit of experience, so.
Just a same question, basically, what's your rollout plan? How soon do you think you'll start? Will it also be spring for you?
Yeah, I believe it'll also be spring, too. You know, originally, we were thinking we might be able to do a fall run, but given the timeframe now, it wouldn't be as beneficial, so I think we're probably always, we're going to wait till the spring.
Okay.
Yep.
And will it be start small, just like I asked Mr. Ward, will it be start small or will you just go full steam?
It'll definitely be kind of a, you know, a crawl, crawl, walk, run pace as part, I don't know how much you guys have read into the Statement of Qualifications, but there are some, there are some things, some goals we have to hit, you know, via the town and for nitrogen removal and all that, so, I mean, you can't, it has to be a little bit of a progressive pace.
Right.
So, we, we have a good crew.
That's what I was getting at, because, you know, we have these limits that we have to-
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, we have a good plan in place to hit every mark that we need to.
Okay, good.
And go beyond.
Right, sounds good.
Any other questions from the board at this point in time? Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Do I have a motion, a findings and a motion?
Findings will be the same, and just thrilled that we have three strong applicants to follow along this process, and I would move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, final public hearing on this issue, public hearing notice is as follows. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 24077 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaw on a request for a shellfish aquaculture permit by Matthew Weeks, 282 Trotting Park Road, T-Ticket, Mass. 02536. Request for this permit was received on July 15, 2019, in the office of the Board of Selectmen. Said hearing will be held on Monday, September 9, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, located at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. Application is for a permit to grow eastern oysters in a suspended aquaculture site identified as Site C in the Falmouth Statement of Qualifications issued 7/5/2019 within a perimeter of approximately half acre located in Eel Pond, approximately 150 feet west of Washburn Island. The mooring to be rented from the Town of Falmouth is to be located within this half-acre site in an estimated water depth of five feet at mean low tide. Copy of the aquaculture license application is on file at the office, Board of Selectmen. Licensing Board is the Board of Selectmen, publication date, Friday, August 23, Falmouth Enterprise. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, you were the national champion in 200 breaststroke, in what year?
Well, in Masters, not in the, like-
Oh, okay.
The old man's league.
That's all right, you got to put out, any accomplishment has to be on there.
Very impressive resume for the years and years that you've been involved in agriculture. I think, not to point you out over the other three, all three applicants, just really incredible that we're having people come forward with this kind of experience.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
When will you start rolling out?
It'll be the spring as well.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we'll be meeting the town's targets right off the bat.
Okay.
Each year, building from that, so.
Sounds good.
Any other questions from the board? I just want to just make a quick comment that I think that this, I know this is the first time we've done this, and I really have to applaud the process having this much information available to us. Every single applicant took, I mean, we hope everyone takes applications seriously, but we get a different range, and these were as thorough as I've seen for most applications for just about anything that comes before this board, and the resumes for each of these applicants just, you know, really, really made me feel terrible about myself, but I'm glad that everybody has it. Very, very impressive, so thank you for putting that all together.
Yeah, I would add, I think these three set the bar pretty high, which is terrific, and I also do want to make sure to call out the Shellfish Advisory Committee-
Yes.
-which really worked with us, and they really drafted the original Statement of Qualifications, and they really helped us get to this point.
That's great. Really, from that group being put together to all the work that they've done in the short time that they've really been in existence is very impressive. They've done a lot of work, so. All right, anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak against it?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And same findings?
Same findings, and I move approval of the application for Matthew Weeks.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, congratulations.
Thanks for your contributions to the town.
Okay, moving back to administrative orders, we have the approved filing of grant application to Mass DEP under Electric Vehicle Incentive Program. Mr. Suso, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have a couple of emails which we shared with you from Public Works Director Ray Jack. Essentially, we're proposing the replacement of two inspectional vehicles with electric hybrid vehicles and also a charging station, and if this is agreeable to the board, we would apply for grant funding to underwrite a portion of the cost of that initiative.
Okay, any questions? I mean, this is right in line with some of the suggestions and part of our strategic plan that we talk about every year of moving to a more sustainable, you know, fleet of vehicles, so. The one question I would have is, is this going to go before Finance Committee in the usual order, just because it is a grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. Sounds like a great idea.
So, would anyone, is it, do I have a motion to vote to approve that filing, subject to the approval of the Finance Committee Subcommittee?
So, move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, vote to accept local community grant funding from Walmart in the amount of $3,500 to the Police Department donation account for bicycle safety helmets for the Falmouth youth bike safety.
I move approval.
Okay, thank you, with thanks to Walmart. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Vote to approve the proposed changes in the 2019-2020 shellfish regulations. Hello again.
Hello, Chuck Martinson, Shellfish Constable. Annually, I come in front of the Board of Selectmen to present recommendations for shellfish regulations. The highlight of this year's regulations is that we are proposing a lot less regulations than we normally do. Normally, we hold back some of our ponds to be opened up a little bit later in the season. The state allows them to be open earlier in the season, however, in the past, we've received requests to hold them due to a number of different issues. This year, we will, we have heard from a number of different individuals, both on the commercial and recreational side, and we're proposing that we open the areas at the same time that the state would allow us to open the areas. That's the first section, and then the second section is we propose to hold off opening of commercial oysters until October 22, and that will get us past Vibrio season, so we will not need to worry about Vibrio controls, which essentially is significant amount of icing and other actions that need to take place, which is a bit cumbersome on the diggers. We have had, we approached the Shellfish Advisory Board back in May, met with a subgroup put together with fishermen after that, a couple of individuals showed up for that meeting, so it has been vetted at the commercial level.
Right, any questions from the board?
Nope.
Is there anyone here who wanted to speak on this issue? No? Okay. Do I have a motion or any other information that people think they need before they approve these changes?
No, I move approval of the proposed shellfish division, annual shellfish resource management regulations.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.
Thanks very much, Chair.
Okay, we have a firm staff appointment to Coastal Residency Resources Subcommittee. Mr. Suso, did you want to?
Yes, thank you. Provided the Selectmen with a copy of communication from the Cape Cod Commission. They're creating a new Subcommittee for County Coastal Resources, and had recommended staff members to various municipalities for appointment, and I'm pleased to suggest Jen McKay and affirm Jen McKay's appointment, our conservation administrator, for that purpose. I want to bring that to the board, although technically, I don't believe it's required. I would just bring it to the board for your information and your concurrence, if you would so agree.
Okay, any questions on that matter?
No, I think she's in a good position, since she always attends the coastal residency group there, so she knows what's happening. Well, I can attest that she's actually gone and gotten the training for the coastal management certification.
Correct.
I've been part of those workshops, so I know she was there, so I think it's very appropriate. So, I move to endorse the appointment of Jen McKay to the County Coastal Resources Subcommittee.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suso. Special events, new recommended Woods Hole Centennial Celebration, Woods Hole Community Association, Water Street, from Drabbage to Candle House, Woods Hole, Sunday, 9/22/2019. This is a request to close Water Street, and I know we've received a number of emails from most of the business owners-
Yeah.
...and community members that would be weighing in, and they've all been positive. I don't think we've had a single negative response to that particular request.
I think the closure would be from 2:00 to 7:00, or?
Yes, it says from 2:00 to 7:00, and the event hours are then 3:00 to 6:00, so it leaves a setup and cleanup time on an hour on either end.
Okay.
I saw Catherine Bumpis, yes.
I don't need to say anything.
Okay, you just sit here and answer questions, okay? No, I mean, we've had, we have quite a bit of information, and as I said, we've had a lot of weigh-in. Does the board feel they need any further information?
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a wedding ceremony, Julia Mata, for this, let's see, the date is September 28, 2019. This is on Old Silver Beach Residence Side. 28th, 2019. This is on Old Silver Beach Residence Side. I think this is the, the application that we got some way in about parking and
And the timing.
the timing of it got moved to
Right.
to create less of a burden for anyone else using the beach. And we do have approval from the beach superintendent.
I move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We have, let's see, a report from the Council on Aging. Sees them hiding in the hallway, so come on in. Come on up. Welcome.
Fight my way in.
I know, right? Well, that's no different than what you've had to do for all these years, so that's, okay, you're used to it.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity of inviting us here. We have a few members of the Council on Aging. We have Judy Ruballo, Cal Kenny, and Sue Gallagher, and Jill Bishop, the Director of the Senior Center Staff, and I'm Jim Vera. I chair the Council on Aging.
If the members, I don't know if they, if it's just easier if they wanna come stand up here, then folks can also see the people who serve them so diligently, and they can also not be stuck in the doorway.
Okay, well, it's particularly fitting that we're here tonight, because this is, September is the National Senior Center Month, and next week, we'll be having our annual open house at the Senior Center, and this is the old Senior Center, so I wanna make that clear. We don't have people coming to the building yet. It's on September 16th, it's from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and we'll have exhibits, and we'll have people from the town, and we'll have people representing services, and Jill will probably fill you in a little bit more on that. So the Council on Aging has a few items that we'll be working on in FY 2020. Obviously, the main item on our agenda is to transition into the new building. It's, it's a major undertaking, and it's gonna take some time, and everyone is working really hard to make it a success. We're also intending to update our mission statement and revamp our marketing efforts, so we have a lot to do this year. And as always, we continue to support our staff and everything that they do there. I've been on the Council on Aging now for seven years, and, you know, it continues to amaze me what Jill and her staff do in that building on a daily basis. It is truly astounding, and for anyone who isn't familiar with what goes on there, we produce a newsletter. Right now, September, October has just come out, and that's available here at the Senior Center or online. So anybody who wonders what we're doing there, I would definitely encourage them to take a look at the newsletter. I have a few photos of what's going on at the new building, and I'll just run through them. I know that you folks have had an opportunity in the last few weeks to go through the building, but I think that, for the most part, the folks here and at home have seen the outside of the building, but they haven't had an opportunity to see what's been going on inside, so.
Although that looks impressive, too, because now the parking lot has been, everything, sort of all that staging has been taken down in the front, which is, which is great.
Do you have an estimated ribbon-cutting date?
We, the contractor is scheduled to be done, final completion, the first week of December. I think the contract reads December 5th for the final day, final completion day.
I'm gonna put the mic back.
Yep.
And what we intend to do is open after the holidays. We'll have, obviously, it's gonna take us a while to move in furniture and transition to the new building, and then you've got the holidays are thrown in there. So I would expect that we'll be opening the doors sometime in January, but we, we'll be working that out with town manager and Peter to come up with the date once we get a little bit closer.
Really unbelievable.
This is at the main entrance. Looking down the hallway, on the right-hand side, you'll see the opening there. That is where the reception will be, and the staff, and just a little bit further down is the elevator. So that's the main hallway. If you look up, there's an opening up to the second floor, so it kinda connects the two floors visually.
I'm sorry, in the tray right beneath you there, there's, you can use the mouse or the arrow key to advance?
There you go.
No. Is it, oh, are there, if you're...
These, these were in order, some order, anyway.
We're gonna give a technology class next week. That'll be the first class you hold when you open, obviously.
Jim, I think you dropped some paper there.
I do. So I'm not sure what this program is. The, the new building is really gonna be right up to date technologically. We spent a lot of time and effort on getting that right, and we've had a lot of help from the IT Department here. Greg has been involved in that intimately, and so we hope we're gonna get it right. But, you know, the technology changes basically.
Well, one thing, just while you're looking, one thing that I noticed when we went and toured was how many spots you had for some, you know, TVs to sort of show people what the programming is. So even when they get in the building, to be able to, you know, sort of when they first come in, those sort of information boards, that there's just a lot of points for individuals to see what's happening, what's upcoming, because the space is obviously gonna accommodate a lot more programming opportunities than, than you currently have space for.
It doesn't, I'm sorry, I apologize. It doesn't look like we're gonna be able to show the photos for some reason. We don't, we have a compatibility issue. But just briefly, I had some photos of the, one of the things that I wanted to talk about is, is the light inside the building. Anyone who's gone by has seen the number of windows on the outside of the building. That translates to a lot of natural light on the inside, and so all of those program spaces are around the perimeter of the building, so all those rooms that have programs in them all have natural light, and a lot of the big rooms are on the corners, so they have light coming in from two directions, and that is really making the space really special. As you've seen, anyone going by there, there's been a lot of site work going on. Lawrence Lynch has been doing site work there hot and heavy over the last few days. And one of the things that we haven't talked about in previous meetings is the amount of site work that's been going on. Really, all the site work is being redone, not just the paving. All the drainage in the parking lots have been redone. It's gonna be new lighting, new curbs, new sidewalk. The traffic pattern has been redesigned. So really, that's, besides seeing the building, that's really a significant piece of the whole puzzle, is redoing the site work, and that's been a significant expense. But I think, long-term, it's gonna be well worth it, and it's gonna make the whole campus work a lot, work a lot better. And certainly, if we hadn't had that as part of the process, that, that campus wouldn't work as efficiently as we're hoping it's gonna work.
Were there many extras on that site work?
The site work? Not really. It's always been intended to redo all the drainage. You know, we found some, some debris that was on the ground that we didn't know about. Obviously, when you start digging, you always find some surprises, but nothing major. But the scope of the project has stayed the same. You know, the scope has always been to basically redo everything that's there, and that includes now the new road, the one-way road from the front parking lot down past the field and out to Dillingham. That's a one-way. So we've been getting quite a bit of use out of that already, actually. But, so like any construction project, we've had some bumps along the road. Fortunately, none of them have been significant. One of the things that has been a really pleasant surprise is the, the amount of teamwork that's been going on, and it's been the general contractor, it's the owner's project manager, it's the town staff. Really, so many people have, have jumped in to make this project a success, and, and I, and I think that the taxpayers will be very pleased with, with the, with the effort, and really, the bang for the buck that we're getting there. And I also wanna thank all those people who have used the rec building over the last nine months, and thank them for their patience. It hasn't always been easy to negotiate that parking lot, and it always hasn't been convenient for people to get to the rec building for their programs. The contractor did the best that he possibly could, and, and everyone really has, has pitched in and been cooperative, and particularly, Joe Olenek at the rec building has really been helpful to, to keep all that running smoothly and keep all those programs running while all this has been going on. So I know that Jill has a few words to talk, to speak about with, with her programs, and then, you know, I'll be here for any questions.
Great, thank you.
Those photos that you had, will those be on the website after, or?
I can certainly, we can get those on the website.
Just about it didn't work. I know.
Okay, try again. So I just wanted to, Jill Bishop, the Director of the Senior Center, I just wanted to reiterate what Jim had mentioned about September being National Senior Center Month. And we do encourage community members, not just seniors, their caregivers, their family members, to come to the center. It's Monday, September 16th, from 4:00 to 6:00. It's a chance to meet a lot of our local and municipal partners and learn about the different opportunities and services and resources available to seniors in our community. So we encourage you to come out and visit us. This is the newsletter Jim had mentioned, and we try and put as much as we can about our activities and programs and services into it. And we look forward to the new center, and we're very excited, so hope to see you on Monday.
Great, thank you, Jill. Any questions from the board for council?
I got my, snuck mine in.
Yeah, congratulations. That timeline is pretty staggering. You know, we think that just a couple years ago, we really were still talking about a site pretty vigorously and not having a consensus on it, and now we have a project that's, you know, I'm not gonna jinx it, but slated to potentially open in just a matter of months, which is...
And we're gonna have a really big room, if you guys wanna rent it sometime.
With a really nice view, right? Fireplaces. If anybody's looking for any of the members of the Board of Selectmen after January, that's who will probably be hiding out somewhere.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I wanted to take the opportunity, pardon me, Selectman Patterson.
I just wanted to add, and we, and we now have a new multi-sport stadium at the high school site as well, in partnership with the Senior Center. So it's pretty, pretty impressive. So I think we should mention that it's kind of all gone along together, and so.
Absolutely.
And I think, I just wanna take the opportunity, Madam Chair, members of the board, to really thank and acknowledge Jim Vera for shepherding the town, so many of us through this process for multiple years. Going back to initial site selection and visioning, as the board is well aware, but also, Jim is Chair of the Council on Aging, but also Chair of the Senior Center Building Committee, which has been very active in working with Jill and Peter and others of us on the staff, Jennifer Mullen as well, in ensuring that we remain on time and within budget. And as Jim has stated very eloquently, the final product is something we're all gonna be very proud of.
I think shepherding might be putting it a little bit gently. I think there's been a bullwhip he needs to have behind him, making sure it happens, so.
Thank you for your words.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Very well.
Excellent. Next, we have FY 2021 Operating Budget Policy Financial Update and Capital Plan Presentation. Jennifer Mullen, Director of Finance. Which I have to get used to. I was saying, who is Jennifer Mullen? After the first couple of emails that I got, so.
I'm still saying, who's Jennifer Mullen?
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Very exciting. Thank you for having me. I haven't seen you all in a few months, so it's nice to be back, you know, getting ready for the season. So let's start with the budget policy. As you know, every year, we have a recommended budget policy. Board of Selectmen looks, you know, looks at the policy and votes really the direction for 2021. There is a recommended budget policy in your packet if you've had a chance to review. Not a lot of changes from last year. We've had some, we made some minor changes, and really, the minor changes that we've, we've made have to do with our estimated receipts and giving us a little bit of flexibility to maybe increase them to increase some services to the community. As you know, we have a new revenue source which would be the short-term rental tax, although we don't really have any estimates right now, but we can monitor that as we go along. The first year will probably be the lowest year that we'll have the estimated receipts, but there'll be ongoing discussions with the school department to figure out how we're really gonna share those receipts. So a little bit of flexibility in the budget policy. But other than that, this is the second year that we are stewarding our funds into the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund. We've been, which we'll talk about in a minute with our financial picture, is our stabilization fund has been, is about 5% of our operating budget where we wanna keep it, so we don't have to continue to fund that. We really haven't had to dip into our reserves at this time, so. I didn't know if anybody had any questions, or?
Any questions about what was presented for us tonight?
Another great job of making it very clear.
The General Stabilization Fund is a fund that we would tap into more likely in the Spring Town Meeting, where the capital stabilization we would tap into this town meeting. Is that?
Yeah, well, really, the, the General Stabilization Fund would really be for an emergency. Wouldn't be for, as you know, my reoccurring expenses. It would be for a one-time expense that we would think that is, isn't usual, and we'd wanna tap into those funds, whatever that may be.
So that's why 5% is certainly sufficient.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I just looked through the whole thing, and I thought it was really well-done again.
So can we start with moving approval of the budget policy, and then moving on to the update and capital plan?
We would make that request if the board is...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
The second thing that you had in your packet or spreadsheet is from our trust. We invest, we have trust funds, and we invest them with Betholomew, and so I, every year, I usually give you this spreadsheet just to show you how we can invest these funds for the long term, where a lot of our cash is invested for the short term. And this tells you our unrealized gain and loss. It will, it shows that our gain this year on all our trust funds was about $822,000. If you remember, last year, we had a little bit of a loss, but we really have to, when we present the financial picture, we have to stop it at a date and time. You know, so these funds have been invested for years, and we do influx these investments every year with the budget. So we did have a good gain this year. One area that you'll really see it, that you all work with a lot, is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So you can see every year, we adjust that for those gains, and so our investments have been working pretty well for us. So I'd just like to give you that financial picture, that we had a good year.
Thank you.
And where, which fund is the OPEB?
The OPEB is on your last page. We actually moved that into...
It's its own separate thing. Great.
Yeah, they have it separate. We actually, there was a vote before I even started working here to create a trust fund for the other post-employment benefits, and what that allows us to do is invest that a little bit more aggressively, maybe than the other funds for a real long term, as you know. And so we did move those money, so they show that separately.
So quite significant that if our market value right now is $750,000, and we're putting $500,000 into it this year.
We're gonna start, yeah, putting, exactly.
Moving forward to not come close to what we need to, but...
Right, this will be the first year. Now, that first $500,000 that we voted last year, this is as of June 30th, 2019. So that doesn't, that's all the $100,000s that we've been putting in there every year. It doesn't even include the first $500,000.
Okay.
Right now, we're probably more at 1.2.
Exactly.
But, but our liability is gonna be stretched out over quite a few years in terms of drawing on this fund.
Exactly.
So what?
But we don't draw from the, we don't draw from the OPEB fund until we, I mean, our budget is not using these monies
Exactly.
to pay any of our liability. This is in the case of the...
Catastrophe.
Right.
Yeah, we, you know, we could, you know, at some point, maybe for health, it would have to be for insurance, right, for health insurance. But right now, the way that we've been handling our health insurance is we have a little bit of a buffer in the operating budget to really, and you hear me talk about that, to smooth those increases out. But at some point, I probably will be, I don't even know if I'll be alive, I might be retired, but was when we will probably draw that fund.
Hopefully alive, but maybe retired. Let's go with that scenario.
It'll be a long time.
I got a question. So on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, what's the end goal of that?
Actually, I mean, it's really hard to put an end goal, as you know. I mean, there's a lot of talk about affordable, we put, the money that we put in it comes from the Community Preservation Committee. So the gains that we're getting are from, you know, being able to invest it for the long term, not just, you know, like a short-term note or in our bank. But the goal to be at a certain point with the affordable housing is a policy discussion that I haven't been involved with. I'm sure it would come with the Affordable Housing Committee, with maybe the CPC being the major funding source, looking at, you know, projects that you have.
Well, the reason I ask is right now, we don't have any money available to fund affordable housing, and we just made a commitment to a developer, and we couldn't even complete that commitment until next round of funding. So now, is this there to back that up, or do we need to wait till this reaches a certain plateau before we start? Or do we need to wait till this reaches a certain plateau before we start drawing on it?
No, it's a great question. So the money that you have right now in your affordable housing has really been encumbered, if you will. It's been spoken for. You all have voted for the projects that will be coming out of that. I will tell you that the CPC does meet Thursday night, and they will be looking at an article to transfer another $465,000 into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. If, you know, there's discussion or policy to put more money in there, you know, that can take place, you know, separately, other than the budget process. But we have been funding it from CPC, you know, every year.
See, so this money, even though it shows on paper here, this is money that's already spoken for.
Yeah, it is. We're just investing, we're getting the investments, yeah.
All the money that we've set aside for those is coming from this.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
But it represents a balance that's been encumbered, but it's still investable.
Right.
As long as we can liquidate it in time to pay the reimbursements of that request.
So we can still make the money on it while we're waiting to use it.
Exactly.
Any other, any other questions?
All right, I'm going to try this. All righty. Okay. Ready?
Yes, I'm ready, thank you.
All right, so the capital plan. In your packet was the spreadsheet that we're all familiar with, with the 10-year capital plan and the detailed sheets of what is being recommended. And you have in your spreadsheet what has been requested, what we've recommended. And if it's not in the proposed line item, then we didn't recommend it, maybe probably put it off for another year. This is a healthy capital plan. We're looking at spending $11.1 million this year. $9.6 million will come from free cash. About $1 million will come from the capital stabilization fund. And, you know, this kind of is great parlaying off the investments because we're able to invest that money from the capital stabilization fund, healthy investments, and we're gaining a lot from that. And we've been drawing, we'll only draw about a million from it, but we've been able to stay steady with the capital stabilization fund. So we've been able to propose a healthy capital plan that really keeps our reserves in place. We're not drawing on our reserves. We are, but we aren't, because we put $1 million in there, a little bit more than that every year with the investments. We're looking at using about $250,000 from overlay surplus and then from other articles, water and wastewater that have been on the books for a little while. Actually, we feel the projects have been closed out, we'll reallocate those funds. So with the capital plan and the one-time funding plan, as you know, we present this at the annual town meeting. It's one-time revenues for one-time expenses. These are our one-time revenues, and these are our one-time expenses. We set it up this way, in an economic downturn, when your free cash may go down and may be depleted, we can at least cut back on the capital plan, and it doesn't have to fight for services of the community, not cutting your actual operating budget. And I always like to say, you don't have police crews fighting for, you know, police officer positions when you're having to look to cut back a little bit. The requests are submitted by the department heads and reviewed by the finance director, assistant town manager and town manager. The town manager makes recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. These are the town manager's recommendations to the board. We've met a few times and met with department heads. And this is what we're proposing to you this evening. And then, once you look at this and vote it, or if you made some changes, then it goes to the finance committee for review. And then they'll review it, and then they'll make their recommendations to town meeting. The detailed sheets for the funding recommendations, along with the 10-year plan, they were sent as your packet, as I stated. And use of capital stabilization fund, I think I already went through this. No need to kind of go through this again. I will say that we've allocated a little bit more to the school department, per their request this year, of 1.3 million. And last year, it was around $1 million that we recommended from the school department. I do want to say that I meet periodically with Superintendent Dorr and Patrick Murphy, the finance director for the school department. We have very good communication, I'm very well aware of their needs. And we all work together to make a recommendation where they're happy, for lack of another word, with the plan that we're actually putting forward. So some of the major initiatives in this plan is Menon Beach. That's a big initiative. I know that has come before the board already. And Chappaquaay Beach Phase Two Causeway, as you know, the Phase Two with the road over by Chappaquaay Beach will be, we have the permitting for that now, so we'll be moving forward with the bid and the construction. Another major capital project that we'll be undertaking is the water tank painting. Don't say that three times fast. That has been on the capital plan for a number of years. And we've looked at different ways of how we could really get the best bang for your buck, if you will. But we really, that's $2 million, and we'll be painting the water tank, and that's definitely overdue. We're funding the recommended amount for road maintenance. Coastal Resiliency, you'll see some money in there, which we did last year, which we proposed last year for, you know, matching some grant funding. And, you know, the committee meets and comes up with recommendations. Field maintenance, which is well underway. We've been under that project, going for with that project for over a year, so we're going to continue to fund that. And we're replacing the Gus Canty gym floor. Another couple, we're requesting money for electronic document storage. We moved a lot of the files downstairs over to the old water department, or over...
Pumping station.
The station, thank you. And so we're moving forward with archiving those electronically. And that would be an upgrade, I think, to Laserfish, which we've been using. Vehicle replacement, we are requesting two electric vehicles this year, which is pretty exciting, with a charging station. We've been working with Rayjack. Aquaculture, money to fund the aquaculture that we've been working on for the last year. Some bike path maintenance and some athletic field renovations. I might have that in there twice. So in conclusion, this is the second year of funding major capital items from cash in the capital stabilization fund, which is really as exciting, is that we've, we've had some big projects that we've had to take on. And one is the water main down Main Street. And we were able to fund that with, a lot of that with cash, four and a half million dollars of cash. And the same thing with this project, especially with what you're seeing over at Menon Beach in, you know, removing the bridge and then doing that other major project for Bourne's Pond. We've been able to, Bourne's Pond's a borrowing project, but what we're doing at Menon Beach is probably a little over a million and a half, and we'll be able to fund that with cash without having to borrow. And, you know, Chappaquaay Road as well, and the water tank painting. So we've been able to really move forward with that. So we continue to make progress funding large capital items, and we're maintaining reserves. We're very, doing very well maintaining our vehicle replacement program, and we do continue to fund major initiatives. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Two comments. One was going back to the capital stabilization. We're putting a million in from the tax, from the meals tax, plus also putting about a million in from investment returns, right?
Yeah, it's about, probably about $600,000 from meal tax, $600,000 to $700,000, and the rest is from the levy. And that was established years ago from the capital committee.
The only other question I have is one we're actually not spending this year, but I think our plan is in 2021. And I was a little surprised that we need to put in quite some money for the Consolidated Dispatch Communication Center again. Is that something that you can talk about, Mr. Suso?
I believe, is that a software package that we're talking about?
Yeah, that's the software part. It was recommended. I think it was just to let us know. It's, the name of the program eludes me right now. The police department uses it, and the consolidated communication uses it well. A lot of, a lot of communities in Massachusetts do. We have 351 cities and towns. And so there are some issues with the communication package. And so we're looking at alternatives, as a lot of other towns are doing as well.
And the old software is being phased out.
Yeah.
So it has to be replaced, and we knew that was coming. So it's really unrelated to the facility itself.
I thought we'd done that when we had moved it, but I guess it was something we knew we were going to have to do soon.
Correct, we knew it was coming.
Because I thought when we were at the police and fire station, it was on its absolute last legs, and we had to replace it. Did we replace it then with something that only had two or three years in it?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't a brand-new software package at that time.
Okay.
It was just converting from one location to another. So we knew that we were going to have to have a new generation program.
Because there's also hardware that...
I think there's a lot of telephones.
Maybe that's the hardware that was...
It was hardware.
It was the hardware.
I think it was the microwave transmission connection.
Radios.
Thank you.
I just would emphasize, it's really, it's nothing related to Consolidated Dispatch. It's the IMC software program that the police and fire station departments have been using, and most departments in the Commonwealth have been using for decades.
Okay, it's just under the Consolidated Communications line item.
Correct, because they both, both departments use it.
Under that umbrella.
I think it's a challenge that we're always going to face when we have technology that's based on software that has to be maintained. Periodically, we're going to have to make an upgrade. You know, these things don't last forever. They have a sort of a life expectancy.
Any other...
And I guess the only thing maybe to highlight is, as a warning to everyone out there, is next year is a much bigger fiscal 2021 capital at this point because we're hoping to do something with the fire station's situation. And that, well, 11 million's not a small number. It's a manageable number. And next year, we may have to come up with some ways of coming up with some maybe overrides or something, but...
Um, last year, I presented a capital facility plan to you all with the, you know, the big spreadsheet. And we do have money in there for a consolidated fire station. So we have been able to fit it into the debt drop-off. The reason why I didn't really present that again this year because there has been really no, there haven't been any changes. But when we have an initiative that's in front of us, when we go to the ballot, I'll update that sheet a little bit more with costs. It's already in there, which is, will be great. And then give another extensive presentation. But you're absolutely right, that will be coming.
So maybe just, Mr. Suso, something to keep in mind. After the fall, when we kind of get this report back, and we've had a further conversation as a board about the future of, you know, maybe a future plan for consolidated. We can have Jennifer come back maybe in the early spring, late winter to kind of go over that facility's capital plan again.
Absolutely.
Because I think it's always helpful. I know it's helpful for us to see it. I think it's also helpful as we anticipate those type of expenditures for the public to see it and be able to weigh in.
Right.
And to see sort of how things fit in with the debt drop-off and compete, sometimes competing projects and competing.
Happy to have Ms. Mullen back with us.
It does seem that these request forms, the information is getting more and more thorough and complete, that you just, you have everything you possibly could want.
Oh, good.
As we're looking at these numbers.
Yeah.
It might be a part of the packet that goes to town meeting members also, but...
Yep.
It will be, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Jennifer?
All right, thank you very much for having us this evening.
I just have a question.
Do we want to vote, I think, Jennifer, to accept this capital plan?
Doesn't say vote, but...
I just have a question about the spreadsheet and calculations. But I'll see you on the side, Jennifer.
Oh, okay.
It's just something that didn't add up for me. But it's a nit. I mean, it's not something that has to do with policy or where that money's invested.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Come and see me, Annie.
Do you need that vote from us? Is that what, transmitted to the finance committee to go to finance committee?
I think it's helpful, yeah, to take the next step. I would move that we send this capital plan to the finance committee.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, next, we have a status update from the Department of Public Works on the Palmer Ave crosswalk at Goodwill Park. Good evening.
Madam Chair, could I make an introductory comment?
Yes, please do.
I'd sent a note to the Board of Selectmen earlier today. We'd received a number of emails, as the board's aware, on this pedestrian, proposed pedestrian crossing to Goodwill Park. And some of the emails that I viewed seemed to suggest that there was some question as to whether this was going to go forward. And I just wanted to clarify, this Board of Selectmen has already voted, as you already know. So it's unquestioned that this improvement is going to be occurring. And this is about a status update exclusively. And the next step will be taking it to Mast dot, which ultimately has to sign off and authorize the significant improvements that are going to be necessary to do this correctly. So I just want to clarify that going in.
Thank you. And just a further clarification that we've already been involved with Mast dot on this project.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's not that this would be the first time that Mast DOT is going to see us. And I know that you're going to walk us through a little bit of the process and where it stands, if you will, so.
James McLaughlin, town engineer, thank you, Madam Chair. So as Town Manager mentioned, we're just hoping to update the board on where we are. The expectation is that we'll be submitting these plans subsequent to the board's meeting this evening. And we have a full set of construction drawings to submit to Mast DOT. And we've had several meetings with Mast DOT staff. And we're hoping that the plan that we have now is one that will meet their criteria and will be able to move forward with. So as I mentioned, there's a full set of construction drawings. It's a 12-sheet set. And I think everyone knows where we are. We've got Palmer Ave running along here, Bike Way along here, and a spur projected out to Palmer right here. Goodwill Park Playground is over here, and the remainder of the park is over in this area here. So the plan is to get from the Bike Way through this spur across the street and up into the access road for the park. The right-of-way here in this location, and this is the existing spur trail. The right-of-way here is, the state layout goes from here to here. It's about a little over 60 feet wide. So it's a significant jurisdictional issue with the, with the state. And our proposal is to construct an ADA accessible ramp here, as well as one over here, and then proceed up, once we get past the state layout, to run cross-country up to the access road that goes to the park. This shows in a little more detail, and we've also included a note that this portion of the access trail would be subject to modification based on trees and vegetation. So this is a flexible section. And the intent is, this is probably about 10 to 15 feet higher than the state layout. So the intent is to construct a swale on either side of the path and install leach-and-catch basins on either side, just up above the state layout. So catching all the drainage from the town property, discharging it into the ground at these locations here. The path itself is eight feet wide, which matches what's already existing on the other side of the street. The traffic plan that we've been discussing with the state is a HAWK system. And that involves a mast arm which goes across the road, has two HAWK signals facing this way and two facing that way. Stop sign or stop bar here, a stop bar here. Advance warning of the crossing is at this location and also over here. Now, there's also a crossing signal or pedestrian signal here, as well as on this side with the, this is on a post, and this is the mast arm here. And both of these, both sides of the road, of course, have a push-button signal. This is a photograph of one from Ohio that I took off the internet. And this is a good illustration of what this system will look like. These two signals here are what they call HAWK signals. The bottom one is a yellow signal, and the two top ones are red. Over here, you've got, we've got the mast arm itself, of course. And then there's a pedestrian signal here and also a post over on the other side of the street. You can see it's over here with a similar signal here that, once someone activates the push-button here, these lights will start to initially flash yellow, and then go to solid yellow. And then after the solid yellow, these red lights will go solid. And at that point in time, the pedestrian signal will indicate that it's safe to cross. Up until that time, up until the full red, this is always a stop, no crossing sign on both sides of the road. And that's the way it is continuously until someone presses this button and activates the system. After, uh, after running through that si, that cycle, um, these red lights will start to flash, alternating back and forth. And that is when the pedestrian signal starts to flash that, uh, you shouldn't start to, to go across. And if you're already out in the intersection, uh, it's time to move quickly to get to the other side. Once, um, once the flashing cycle ends, there's, uh, again, a solid red for about one second. And then, these, um, pedestrian signals will again go to no cross. And these lights here will go dark. So, the only time that these lights are active is when someone presses the button and, uh, gets the, the system going. And the pedestrian, uh, signals on both sides are always in a don't-cross, um, signal until, uh, it's, this button is pressed and the, the red lights stop the traffic. And, uh, you can see here, there's a stop bar here with signage indicating that this is where the, uh, traffic would stop coming from this direction. And there's a similar one heading in the other direction. Uh, so, that's the, the plan that we have prepared. And as I indicated, uh, our expectation is to submit this to Mast DOT. We'd expect that it's probably about a six-month period of review and back and forth. I'm sure they'll have some comments. Um, and, uh, we've already had, as I mentioned, a few, several meetings with them. And, uh, they've had a, a lot of comment, but also been very supportive of the project. So, I would expect that, uh, over the course of that six months or so, we should be in a position to, to move ahead. Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll start by asking if there are any questions from the Board. Sam?
Jim, is the State gonna be responsible for actually implementing the final solution that they agreed to?
Oh, no, I, the cost, as far as the construction cost? No, I, I'm expecting that that'll be a, a town expense.
Okay, thanks.
I think it's fascinating that how different this is than the plan we saw, I think, about nine months ago.
Absolutely.
That clearly shows that the law of work has gone back and forth from the town and the state to be able to present a plan to them that we are optimistic they'll accept. And they probably would not have accepted where we were before, which I think was to actually have the intersection closer towards the Goodwill Park entrance and not actually at the spur. But, uh, which I had some support for because I was worried about bikers thinking they can come right off the bike path and go straight across Palmer Ave. But with the kind of arm that you're talking about, I think it's gonna be very clear to the bikers that they must stop there to be able to get easy access across.
Some of the earlier versions, we had, um, uh, the, the spur from the bike path to the sidewalk here involved, um, improvements in, in riding on the sidewalk here and crossing either here. And then, there was another version here. Both involved improvements to the sidewalk on this side, as well as additional sidewalk on, on the other side of the road to get over to the, uh, to the access road. This, uh, this plan eliminates all of the activity really in the state layout other than the crossing itself and gets us off onto our, uh, our own property where we can control our own...
The one thing I would ask that we make sure we do is make it a big enough waiting zone on the bike path. Because one of the problems we do have at Locust Street right now is the bikers who come up to the edge of the road aren't ready to go across the road. Our drivers actually are now fairly well-trained that they stop because there's a biker there. And their driver says, "No, no, I'm not ready to go yet." And they're saying, "Well, you're right there in the path of, or next to the road waiting to get across. How do I know whether you are actually wanna cross?" So, as long as there's a waiting path that's sort of back away from the road as they decide, "Yes, my whole group is here. Now, I wanna push the button to go across," I think that's all useful.
Done.
So, did I hear you correctly? Did you say that that whole other side is gonna be ADA compliant?
Uh, th, this area here?
Yeah.
Yes, so this is a, uh, the, um, note that we added to the plan just recently is that, um, this is variable in terms of its location, but we will have to maintain a five percent slope, which is, uh, what's required for ADA compliance.
So, that'll be a pretty big excavation project there.
Well, um, you know, there's, this is probably higher than, than over here. So, it, it may be a question of...
How it runs.
Working up onto the other side to, to work with the grades a little bit better. But, uh, we have topo at the site, and we do, uh, we do know that this configuration here meets that, that five percent.
So, then, also with the, uh, the mast and the traffic signal controls, that looks pretty expensive, too. So, this project is really, uh, becoming pretty big, I would think. I'm wondering if we should be even examining the cost of a overpass for bicycles? Just because this may be getting more expensive than originally thought.
Well, I think there's no question that this, this will be an expensive undertaking. We're, we're thinking that, uh, it's probably in the $200,000 range. But I think, um, if we're looking at a bridge or an overpass-type situation, probably thinking, you know, looking at millions of dollars for...
There'd be no...
And the other thing, you know, it's a real challenge coming on this side here where it's relatively flat.
Mm-hmm.
To be able to make the grade to get up over, um, would probably involve some type of switchback, uh...
Or you'd have to use that hole?
Yeah, but then, you know, we'd get, we'd end up building walls, uh, along either side here where, where this is just an easement to be able to get, to make that grade up and get up over the road.
And also, probably less intrusive for the abutters that are already there. You know, I think, uh, living next to sort of the bridge of that type is, is a very different scenario than what they have currently, which is fairly, um, you know, fairly just neutral. That's why...
So, it's clear that you've given it some thought already, and it's huge difference in money, then?
Oh, yeah. I think, uh, you know, there's, um, Mast DOT did a, uh, well, they've done a few, um, uh, these bridges in, in Dennis and, and Yarmouth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, I know the one in Dennis, uh, the retaining walls alone, I'm sure, um, over a million dollars just to, to get, get the road up, uh, to an elevation where they can get over Route 134.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, and I think that, that would be the case here as well.
Okay.
And so, you're thi, I know, we're not gonna hold you to it, but you're thinking somewhere in, in what you've looked at so far with the scenario that you're running, somewhere around that $200,000?
Yeah. As we go through the process with Mast DOT and things are finalized, uh, one of the things that, uh, we'll be looking for, as well as Mast DOT will be looking for, is, is gonna be a, uh, detailed opinion of probable construction cost from the design engineer. So, we'll be able to, to hone in on that, uh, much finer as we go forward.
Okay.
Um, I know that there are a number of folks, uh, from the community. Um, I would ask if Scott Lindell, did you have any comments or, or thoughts you want to make from, from, uh, Chair of Bike Ways? Bike Way and Pedestrian?
Bicycle and Pedestrian.
Yeah.
The Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, yes. Um, thanks. Uh, this, this is the, this is great to see this kind of progress, as many of you pointed out. Um, it's the first time I've had a look at it, and, uh, I think it makes great sense. Um, we're anxious, as many people in this room are, to see it progress as speedily as Mast DOT will allow. And I know Jim's doing his best to, uh, to shepherd that process.
Great, thank you. And thanks for, um, you know, the input that we've gotten over the years from the committee to kind of make this go along. That, that certainly kind of helped bring it to where it is. Um, unless somebody has a sort of radically different comment they wanna make. Um, but I know there are a lot of people who came to speak on this. I just wanna give them the time, and that we have a number of other issues. But did you wanna say anything?
Just, just so quick.
Yeah?
I, I just, I just wanna...
Introduce yourself.
Uh, sorry, this, Elizabeth Seito, I'm one of the main community advocates. And I just wanted to apologize, I was a little mistaken about where we were in this process. And I just wanna say thank you so much for all the work, uh, Jim and Peter McConerty. And, and I guess there's been back and forth with Mast dot. So, just thank you so much. I'm ecstatic. Uh, this is wonderful, and I realize it's expensive and it's worth every penny. So, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Great, thank you. I see a lot of folks from the committee who are here, so thank you for being here. And, um, obviously, any thoughts or concerns you have going forward? Well, you know, we wanna hear those so that they can be part of the process. I know that, um, Engineering and DPW has, um, used some of that information, and they, they take that into this process that they've been engaged in for quite some time. Great, so you don't need anything else from us?
Madam Chair, I was just gonna ask that if we can have, uh, concurrence from the Board to take the next step with Mast dot on filing the formal construction plans, which have been a major undertaking.
I would move that we send this off to Mast DOT.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a great update. Okay. Next, we have approved Shellfish Aquaculture License for Great Harbor, Peter Chase, Francis Duhan. This is, um, the second time, this, the second part of the process. Uh, these two gentlemen have been before us previously. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions? I know we're familiar with the, how long ago were you guys before us?
You know, I don't remember. No, I think it was May, maybe?
March.
March, okay.
March.
Feels like it's been a year ago.
I remember the presentation and the loading.
Any, any questions?
Any changes from the previous plan?
No changes. No, we've just been waiting on permitting from the State, the CONCOM, the Army Corps. And I think we're, I think we're just about done now.
So, what happens now? We say yes, and tomorrow you can put the stuff in, or?
I think so.
You hope so.
I move yes.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Good luck.
Good luck, it's right.
Okay, we have presentation of Seaco Shores Association Beach Plan and request to file with Conservation Commission. Do we have a presentation?
Dan Frohley is here to make a presentation on behalf of Seaco Shores Association.
And folks, I know there, uh, the vast majority of folks in the room are here for this presentation. I'm gonna say the same thing I say for all community presentations. Everybody here is part of the same neighborhood. Um, you know, we're going to, you know, be civil and respectful. Everybody can have an opportunity within reason just to, to, um, share their comments. Uh, these microphones are really sensitive. So, if people are making sort of side conversations, it actually does pick some of that up. And at the very least, makes it really hard for people at home who are watching, um, who are the vast majority of actually the people who live in Seaco, 'cause I know there's a lot more people who live there than are here tonight. So, we just wanna make sure that people are able to hear the presentation. I will certainly leave time for other folks to, um, to weigh in, so...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If someone's recording, I think we need to announce it?
Oh, yes.
Just curious, I, I'm not sure, is that...
I, I do, I think so. If somebody is recording the meeting, um, that, that's fine. You just have to ask permission of the Board. Is there anybody who's recording the meeting on their phone? No? Okay. Great. Welcome, and introduce yourself, and right ahead.
Great. Thanks for having us. Uh, Dan Frohley, um, I'm the Beach Committee Chairman, and, uh, for the last three years. And I've lived in Seaco since, um, 1965. Appreciate the opportunity to share with you our beach plan. I'll run through it as quickly as I can. Now, we're getting a little late on time here. Um, a lot of the slides are pictures, so it should move pretty quick. Just give you the concept, I did send a pre-read.
Yes. We got that.
It's a little bit different, we, as it evolved, um, the presentation, but the points are the same. Um, we have a, uh, committee that has been looking after what to do about our beach for the last three, three and a half years. Twelve of us, I think it's pretty representative of our neighborhood. Um, and we've had many meetings in the last, oh, three, three and a half years. We tried to meet with everybody we could. We tried to get input from everybody we could. Um, like any, you know, uh, neighborhood the size of Seaco, which is, as you know, is a kind of a mini-city, right? It has 933 homes. Um, we, I don't think anybody got everything they want, but I think we got to hopefully a, a good middle ground, uh, a middle ground that we spent a fair amount of time, um, discussing, surveying. This is not, I wanna be clear, this is not an engineer's plan, okay? An engineer consulted with us along the way, but we had a goal of not spending any money till we got the approval to go ahead, not spending a lot of money till we, till we got the approval to go ahead. So, uh, the engineer did consult with us. You'll see a couple of quotes in here. But, um, uh, we didn't, this is not a formal engineering plan, okay? I wanna make that clear. Um, we brainstormed, again, this committee went back and forth with neighbors. It's an important topic for all of us. Um, and we come up with a, uh, we think a plan that, um, would work for, for everybody. We did, along the way, I tried to vet, um, this with various town agencies, trying to get different points of view to make sure we were spending our time wisely. Um, they were extremely helpful, everybody was. Um, and was very positive, and I think in generally very, very helpful and willing to help us, which we appreciate a lot. The committee, and as I said, it's a very diverse committee of 12. It's, it's, uh, from every part of the neighborhood. It's 100% aligned on this plan. And I can tell you, it wasn't easy getting there, but we're there. And, uh, we're pretty, we're, we're pretty pleased to present it to you tonight. The beach plan, we did take it to a vote last year of our membership. Uh, there are about 100 or 25 members, I think, uh, present at the time. It's not always easy to get everybody in the same room at one time. It's something we always struggle with. But that's pretty high as history goes. Generally, we're about 75. But this is an important topic, and it tends to ebb and flow, meeting population with, um, the importance and significance of the topic. So, I think it's some indication of that. And I have to say, is, for as many years I've been in Seaco Shores, I don't think I've ever seen everybody agree on anything in terms of, uh, in a m, meeting like that. And we did get a unanimous, uh, uh, show of membership support, which is not all 933 homes, I wanna point out. But it is representative of our, um, the 125 that were there. Again, I've never seen a unanimous vote about anything in that place. And just as a point, I think this is for Jennifer, we actually had an obligation as a result, 'cause we have replenished the beach about every eight to 10 years for the last 20, 30, 40 years. There's notes going way back, I think, to the 70s and 80s, we've had to replenish this beach. And, uh, we were, we were granted permission in 2014, which we replenished it. We had an order of conditions to do an annual beach profile, 'cause CONCOM, like a lot of agencies, Army Corps of Engineers, we spoke to, they're trying to figure out where the sand, within, within, found within general, but within our area, where's it going? Where's it moving? And the answer is, no one really knows, okay? If they're telling the truth, okay? Army Corps will say that, everybody say. But everybody wants to know the answer to that, okay? And so do we. We'd like to know it. And if you ask 933 homeowners on Seaco, you get 933 theories of where it's going. That's the problem with it, it's very complex. That's not our topic here tonight. Um, but our part of it is to spend, uh, a couple thousand bucks every year. We actually do an annual profile, which is the measure where the sand is relative to waterline on the sand in the beach, so we can see trend lines. I just say, one thing's interesting is we did, this year, do our second. Um, we did one last year, about 2,000 bucks a shot. And, um, interesting enough, it kinda confirms what the Army had suggested, which was that the, if you know Seaco, it's a north, two-mile north-south peninsula. Probably the sand's moving south to north, okay? Or as you're standing at Bayside, looking at Washburn, it's moving from right to left, south to north, okay? Uh, it was actually, uh, uh, less sand on the right. It was actually about the same or a little bit more on the left. So, the sand is clearly moving to the left, they think, okay? Um, okay. Why are we here? Really simply, be, uh, because we need to request approval to file an NOI with the Conservation Commission about our beach plan, okay? And as a result, we're here. And I'll point out exactly why, I think, you know, why we're, what we're here, because there is a component of our plan that involves a town easement. And as a result of that, we're, I think, we're here to, 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 uh, make this presentation to you. Uh, real quickly, I will show you, if I can, let me describe the beach, so we're clear. Picture's worth a thousand words. Um, I don't know if this is gonna work or not, but...
Use the cursor.
Cursor, yeah.
The mouse.
Does it work? Anything here?
It puts an arrow up, there's your arrow there.
There we go, okay. Okay, so we're talking about a 300-foot section of, we call, what we call beach, okay? From this groin here to this groin here, okay? About 350 feet. The association, Seaco Association owns 250 feet clearly, actually it owns theoretically, and Julian and Mr. Duffy have pointed out to us very clearly, they've educated us in the last few years, that the abutters, Mr. Mills here, Mr. Fay here, as well as the association here owns this beach, own to the center line, okay? When I say own, I mean a fee, simple interest, okay? The town has an easement, when they took, when you took, we took the Bayside Road, which it paved about the late 70s and 1980, it paved all of Bayside East, and it paved, probably, something I'll talk about in a second, probably wouldn't have done today, it paved all the way pretty much right to these rocks here, okay? It made that pavement. The reason we put these rocks here, the town actually did it at a request, because I was a child and also a teenager growing up in Seaco, not a lot of good things happened here, okay, I'll tell you that, okay, as a teenager. And so there was a request by the association and the town was granted a request and planted these big boulders up here, as you can see here and here, okay? This is the, this is where the cars go, Edgewater East, up into Bayside, okay, cars never go in here, okay, there was never a reason to it. There's a little history in those, this is Washburn Island, there was a bridge when the Army developed it in, in the early 40s for amphibious warfare training, I know that from my history, I actually was in the Navy for a bit, they trained before World War II amphibious operations, there was a bridge over here which was developed, okay? There's still actually some impervious hot top over here, there's maybe still some remnant of it here, okay, as well. So that's, that's the beach, as you can see, this is where it's at today, and you notice on this section here, if you look here, they see the tan line, that's generally where we did the last replenishment, what do we want the beach to look like, okay? That's a usable beach that works for everybody. As you can see right now, it's gone, okay, down on the south side, and it's moving this way, okay? And we think again, it's going somewhere, maybe actually circulating around Washburn, again, get into no man's land on that question, but we know for certain, it's certainly not on our beach, okay, anymore, that's clear. And this is getting smaller and smaller and smaller, okay, every year it gets a little smaller. As the sand, that's kind of gone here, is this, this rocks right here, this wall, you can see it gets longer and longer in term, as the sand moves on south, okay? So that's, that's the current beach, and you can see the depletion of the sand, and that's why we're here. There is the road, Bayside East, that I pointed out to you, and there are the two sets of boulders, which you can see right here, again, no cars pass here, it's not used as that, it's not used as a road, okay, it's, it's just basically the end of what was the original hot topping that was done, and again, just not to, not to go into it, but it was problematic, we put boulders over it, and it's basically not used as a road, okay? I guess there is someday, you could build a bridge back over to Washburn, but you know, it's such, till such time, that's where it stands, okay? So that's, the area that we're talking about for this plan involves, that's what we call the beach and the access to the beach, okay, which happens to coincide with a public easement, okay, across Bayside, as a number of roads that have been taken, not all roads in Seaco, about half have taken, and hopefully someday the more of them will be, but there's, there'll be hot top and hopefully sewers on all of them, I'm sure everybody'd be happy about that too. Okay, the problems are, real quickly, erosion's obvious, okay, the erosion of the sand. Again, I won't get into theory, I think, I will say this, that the agitation caused by boat weight, because a lot of boats go by that, that section is only about 150 feet wide from Washburn to, to that end of Bayside East, it's only 150 feet wide. A lot of boat traffic through there, a lot of boats in there, a lot of swimmers, it's a crowded area. That agitation of wake, and I'll talk about in a second, one of the problems we have is a lot of boat speed through there, the wave action agitates, and that's what moves the sand, and then it, then it moves on with tidal currents, nor'easters, southwester, depending on what the, the net effect of the wind is in any given year. We have evidence, because we have replenished a number of times, what happens if we don't replenish, you know, I'll show you a picture of that in a second, okay? It's, and it's in process of that, it's a good way done right now, we get a lot of complaints, a lot of emails I get about when are we going to fix this beach, when are we going to fix this beach, because everybody uses it, okay? Impervious surfaces, the hardscape at the end of Bayside, which I showed you between the boulders, is an impervious surface, which our engineers says creates significant problems when adjacent to a marine environment. He goes as far as to say, he never would have done that today. What they know about impervious surfaces next to marine, it's not good, the two don't mix, okay, wouldn't have done that today. It got done back in the 70s, maybe before we knew this stuff, it is what it is, okay? But impervious surface is another problem. We tried again, take a, a big picture view of, of the whole ecosystem there that we'd like to improve. Access, material doesn't match the use, okay? Again, it's, it's built for car, for a hot top, doesn't use as, it's not used as a road. The purpose of the area is to provide pedestrian access, and that means public access, to be clear, right, not just Seaco's access. We've learned that, an easement goes with public access for recreational use of the beach and the adjacent waterway, okay? Even though sometimes we don't always, people put all kinds of things through there, from kayaks to whatever, but it's very well trafficked and it's, it's quite, quite an access point. By, by the way, people who live on Seaco, and we, we actually surveyed it, about 30% plus come from off of Seaco, okay, off in the public, okay, come through there. I know the, somebody, a friend of mine who's off Seaco, he called me one day, saying, can I launch my kayak there, whatever, he said, everybody says it's a great place, so it's, it's well-known outside of Seaco. Displacement, if we lose the beach, I just, again, we, we do, we do, the numbers, we do the survey, we think there's about 10,000 plus, okay, people there, that's just during the high, the 100-day high season, okay? 10,000 people, visitors that use that beach, everything from residents, renters, visitors, as well as off, off-Seaco people, okay? During the busy summer season, many who walk, okay? It's really cool that you can walk to a beach there, right, and a lot of people appreciate that. Question is, if that goes away, what happens to those 10,000 people? They're going somewhere else, hopefully they can get in, and I know some folks wrote letters and made points about that, but that's a big deal, because those people are now forced to get in their car, drive somewhere else, and hopefully they can get a parking spot and go to a beach, okay? Property values, I don't need to dwell on this one, this is a big deal, okay? That's why a lot of people here, we all care about this place a lot, this is one of our most important assets, it has been for quite some time, and it's one, it's, it has a lot of emotional attachment, a lot of people, like myself, that have grown up there, a lot of people in the audience have, they bring their kids, their grandkids, et cetera, it's, it's a really popular thing. And I will tell you this, as a business guy, it's advertised every single rental, and every single time a home is sold, the first thing, you'll see a couple of things in there, this is always in there, okay?
Old beach.
Access?
Old pictures.
To a beach, what's that?
Old pictures of the beach.
Very old pictures. Very old pictures. Always the old pictures, yeah, the time never changes. So the obvious impact on that would be if, would be very, very negative for us. Solution, in one page?
Can you go back to the access?
Yeah, sure.
Who has access to the beach?
It's, because it has an easement, Mr. Duffy has pointed out to us that the public has access to that.
Because I think when you guys came back five years ago, there was discussion about the guard who was there, who was...
Correct, correct.
Is that still going on?
Correct, no, we stopped that. Okay, there was, there was, again, I won't get into that whole story, the net of it was, the town claims an easement there, we're, we're not fighting that, okay? That's not what we're here to litigate, we're here to fight that, okay? We want to, we want to improve it, okay, that's what we want to do. We're in the survival mode now, okay? There'll be nobody traversing it if we don't fix it, okay? Okay, solutions, simple, add sand, okay? And this could go in stages, we'll work with CONCOM and the engineers and all the various professionals required to pull, execute something like this, okay, to make sure we have a plan that makes sense for us, okay? In terms of the number of yards of sand, when we replenish it, there's some corporate knowledge on Seaco, because we've been doing this for the last, again, 30 years, a couple of folks have had some expertise in this, we've tried to include that, so that's, that's, that's numero uno. The impervious surface, we're basically asking to, we want, we want to replace that hardscape on the east end of Bayside Drive with grass, plantings, sand, okay, we want to put some plantings, but have the water protect, protect it from eroding, like we've done with some of our right aways, I'll show you a picture of that, which will improve drainage, mitigate erosion, and protect the coastal boundary, okay? Important words, and that, I think that not only do we talk, we actually acted on and spent money on, okay, and we'll show you that as well. Our engineer says, very, said this, and I put this in your, I'm not going to speak for him, he says, "The proposed changes to Bayside Drive East will be an overall environmental improvement and that benefit in terms of coastal resilience, given sea level rise predictions. Removal of the existing impervious roadway will allow the natural features, sand and vegetation, to better treat and control the surface water runoff." No surprise, okay? And Jennifer, CONCOM, agreed with that assessment. Access, build a new pathway on the east side of Bayside Drive East, beginning at the eastern edge of Edgewater Drive East and continuing to water's edge with appropriate environmentally approved materials to ensure safe public access and handicapped access, okay? Ensure width and surfacing allows emergency and construction vehicles, got some good input from some of our neighbors, we originally had a three-foot sandy path, we've widened it, the final path will be determined by the experts to say, this is what you need to get vehicles through there, okay? The question about whether we, we leave the rocks there or not, that's a question we'll have to talk to the DPW about, we're open either way, that's not a big thing for us, okay? We put them there or not, that's not, that's not a big deal. But we do need appropriate width to get vehicles through there and, as well as access. The, and I'll show you the, something in a minute regarding that. Obviously, if we're able to pull this off, the whole displacement issue, meaning where do we go to the beach, gets eliminated, okay? We stay at, we stay at the beach we're used to, and we've grown up on, and we're all fond of. Property values, take that risk off the table, that's a big deal, okay? Maintain and improve, a lot of good things have been happening at Seaco, some of our property values, we think have improved, a Realtor friend tells me they've improved above the Cape Cod and even the Falmouth norm, so that's a good thing, all right? We'd like to keep that. Big deal for one of our abutters, okay? Both of the abutters are supporters of this, at least they told me this, right? One of them, I know one of them for sure wrote a letter here, he said he would anyways. Mr. Fay, on the, on the left, the, Mr. Fay is very clear, I've talked to him a number of times about this, and he has a lot of passion for this particular point, and he asked me to put it up there and we did, and he said that, when you, when the boats go through there, he said, "They're speeding a lot." Our buoys that we pay for and put at the end of that beach say, "No swimming," which they shouldn't be per state law, okay, theoretically out into that area. He also wants them to say, "No wake," because they don't say that today, and we are very, we will, this, part of this plan, we will do that, okay? Because we, the more we can slow down the boats, the less agitation we have of sand is certainly, and the less risk we have of anybody getting hurt, okay? And right now, a lot of people speed through there. So that's also part of this plan, is no, no swimming as well as no wake. Talked to the harbor mess, see if we could extend it further, if he can help us do that, but that's not part of this plan, okay? Cost, this is the, here's, here's the bad news for us, right? 80,000 bucks, it's the simple fact, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money for our community, right? But we're going to step up, because it's that important for us to do it, we have those funds available, and we're going to, we're willing to spend it, all right? The good news for the town, we're not, we're not here begging you, because we know how resources are always difficult, right? I sat through the Manat presentation, we know all the projects that are on the table for the town. We're willing to take care of our own knitting here, willing to step up and put our money where our mouth is, and we've got the $80,000, ready to spend it and do this job, okay? That was an important piece before we launched this, that we had, that we had the money. Okay, so there's the current beach situation that I showed you, that's where we are today, current state, and this is what we're proposing, okay? You can see, it's obvious, I think, here, that we basically take it back to where it was, last time we replenished it, we had sand basically right in this area here, this groin here, that's basically, right now is back to the seawall, that's, that's, that's an important piece of this, you'll notice here, if I go back, focus your attention down in here, okay? This is something Jennifer was particularly think, interested in and excited about, as we are, which is watch where my arrow is right now, okay? See that? Basically puts some, basically natural plantings, okay? We're not putting riprap, we're not, natural planting, which is what we do in other parts of our right of ways, down the road to basically, natural plantings all along here, the impervious hard top comes out, the town doesn't have to go down there and do drainage, there's currently four drains right down, it's a continual pain in the butt, trying to solve the drainage issues down there, they've solved them, they've done a good job, DPW's, there was originally a pipe that went out through the sand, which we know we don't appreciate it anymore, DPW was all over that and fixed that by putting some wells there, again, they've done a, trying to keep ahead of this drainage problem. This eliminates it. Natural surface is the great thing about God's materials is, they work, right? Which is, sand and plantings, you don't have to worry about the drainage problems anymore, okay, it goes away. The surface here, I don't want to get hung up, I see, look at this piece here, this is the access point, okay, for handicap and other, this surface will be what's appropriate, okay, as the experts tell us, for handicap and other access. The best idea is to herd a certain grade material that we can actually roll up every year, put in and out for the season, that's one idea, another is Trex, obviously, but that'll be, again, done by professionals, it'll be, will be advised by professionals on that as well, okay? So that's, that's the, that's the plan, eliminates the impervious surface, replaces the sand, restores our beach to, I think, a place where we all, we all would appreciate it and would all like it. This becomes this, okay? Again, this becomes, with all its patches and drains and stuff, becomes this, okay? And those boulders are not hard to move, you know, if you, with the right equipment to, to get vehicles and other things down there. And as I said before, this here, this walkway will be, this is TBD, this is a place, a conceptual placeholder, this is a, could be Trex, could be a mat, it'll be environmentally friendly, and it'll make sure that it also drains, so that we don't, we don't create an, create a, another drainage issue. And you can see, there's no need for cars to go there, so there's no problem. If we ever want to build a road to Bayside, to Washburn Island again, we're not any worse off, basically, right? Which I don't think that'll happen in my lifetime, but you know, you never know, right? Again, because we've been, we've seen this movie before, this is what the movie looks like, if you don't, we don't do it, okay? This was before the 14 one, 14 replenishment, you can see, again, the rocks right here, gone, this is down to the south end of the beach, right at the entrance point there, sand is gone, this is that drain pipe I told you about, see, see this, right back to Mr. Fay's fence here, water's basically almost a few feet from the, from the impervious surface here, not a good thing. We don't want, we, we want, and it's starting to look that way now, and we want to eliminate that. Matter of fact, this is, this is a picture, compliments of the tropical storm Dorian that passed us at a, at a high moon tide, in fairness here, this is a high moon tide, but that is a glimpse of what it could look like, and it does look like that, that was a picture shot by one of our, our neighbors at that time, okay? That's not where we want to go. Okay, last point, I think, in terms of trying to be good stewards of our neighborhood and our community, I think just some evidence that we, we do what we say, we mean what we say, we mean what we do, I think, this was our front entrance, before we put 30,000 bucks into it, we won a bunch of awards since we've done that in the last 10 or 15 years. There it is right now, we get a lot of compliments on that, but let me tell you, it's a lot of volunteer hours, because we always try and use volunteer hours when we can, like any good steward of our resources, we try to do that, and a lot of work goes into doing this, okay, keeping this and maintaining this. There, we have, Seaco says 31 rights of ways, 16 or so that the association owns, the other that are easements, much like the town has an easement, we have easements to cross. One of the attractive features of the community is, everybody is two blocks, a block from the water, which is a really attractive feature for a lot of folks. There was 12E, one of our, a few years ago, falling down a mess, no money to fix it, well, we stepped up, put those in, did a bunch of, spent, this is $28,000 on one right of way, and bam, okay? That was fixed a couple of years ago. We have three more on the docket to do that, we have capital campaigns, we do reserves now, something that was never done, our budgets are all squared away, in line, cash in matches or exceeds cash out, so we're able to do these things responsibly, okay, which we weren't able to do in the past. And it's really important, both of the abutters and everybody appreciate that, and generally people really appreciate that, right? So, the question we have tonight is, this is where it is today, and you know, I guess we have to decide tonight, is what's it going to look like after 80,000 bucks? Appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Before I start with any questions from the board and then move to the audience, Mr. Suso, did you have any, was there any particular town input that we want to get before we open it up to any further discussion?
I don't think anything major, only that, yeah, that, Mr. Frohly had discussed that, certainly with Jen McCarry, Conservation Administrator, met with me as well, and we have a history here, as has been mentioned already, and, and attempting to work through some legal questions, which I think have been fully articulated and are behind us. We do have our Deputy Public Works Director and our Town Engineer with us, should there be any engineering related questions on the, the easement on the roadway. Beyond that, all that remains is for the board to consider whether you would so vote to allow this to go to the Conservation Commission. That's a well, point well taken, is that all we're doing would be a vote to allow it to go to the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
Where the real experts would then weigh in on what's going to happen to it.
So, I have a question then.
Yes.
So we're, our vote would be to authorize the work on the roadway that we would still own and maintain as a town way?
We'd just be authorizing them to go to the Conservation Commission.
We'd just be authorizing them to go to the conservation commission.
We're just authorizing really what, in some ways, is, is the first step, even though they come here first. The first step in that, in that proposal really is for conservation to weigh in on the entirety of what.
I think it actually, then goes to CONCOM and then comes back to us again.
Right. Well, let me rephrase the question. So we had a few emails from people who are not as involved in the association, just wondering what would be the status of the right-of-way, and would they still be able to come and go freely? And I absolutely want to make sure that that's the case. When we agree to let them do the work, it doesn't change the status of the roadway.
The easement. The town maintains an easement over this section of the roadway, as Mr. Frawley described, that's unchanged.
Right. Then I, I wouldn't oppose moving forward.
Just a second, I just wanted to see if, did either town engineer or Peter McConery, did you, either one of you want to weigh in at this point? On the easement issue?
I think as it goes forward, we'll all look at the plans.
Okay, great. Okay, Mr. Maritz, did you want to come up and?
I had requested, excuse me, and Maritz.
Yep, come on up here. Yes, I got your email.
I requested the town engineer to come here to comment on the viability of the work they did on the road, which seems to handle all of the major issues of erosion currently. I would like him to address that situation. For the record, there's nobody in our neighborhood that is against rejuvenating the beach. There is an issue, which I can speak to afterwards, about our concern relating to an ongoing legal issue over deeded rights in our neighborhood. But I would like to have the engineer speak to the work they did, and why they did it, and how effective it is. I was down on that spot after the rainstorm Saturday. There was no erosion here, none. Took pictures of it, it's stable. The roadway slopes in this direction to all the catch basins that were put at this spot, there's two here, there's two here. All of Bayside Drive was re-engineered to handle all of that erosion. And I'd like the engineer to speak to that, thank you.
Do you feel like you can speak to that, Jim? Thank you.
So, we have a plan that.
You could just reintroduce yourself to, for the people at home.
Yep, sorry. James McLaughlin, town engineer. So, this plan was developed back in two thousand and eleven. Mr. McConery was the town engineer at the time. And what we did was, there were two catch basins right here with an outfall that extended down towards the water. That outfall was abandoned, and the drainage from these basins was redirected into a new leaching area here, as well as an additional catch basin at this location. This is where the boulders are. Additionally, we, we DPW added drainage basins or leaching basins up in this area here with additional catch basins, and further up the street here. So the intent at the time was to contain the water on-site and eliminate that, that outfall, which was most likely causing erosion at the, at the end of the road. And this is, as is mentioned, a public right-of-way, all the way down to the water. And really, that's it. That's what was done back, I guess, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and as far as I know, is, is working. As Peter mentioned, the proposal to modify the pavement and add some type of access for handicap access, emergency access. That's something that we haven't been involved with the discussions up till now, but we certainly would offer our comments to conservation as it goes through that process. I think, you know, one of, one of the photographs showed the, the access along here, right in front of one of the catch basins. Probably want to locate it a little bit, you know, different type of configuration to avoid that basin, that existing basin, as far as handicap access goes. But I'm sure that something could be done there that we could work out, that, that makes sense. Key, the keys from us are typically drainage, access, and both pedestrians as well as the handicap and emergency vehicles.
And who does the work would change liability but would not change ownership? I mean, if that, if the Seacoast Shores group did that work and put that decking in, it's on town property, so we'd still be liable for it, even if they had put it in?
Yeah, well, I would, I would expect that some type of license agreement would have to be worked out to assure maintenance going forward and give the town the ultimate control of anything, anything in the right-of-way.
But still maintain the access.
On that note, I'm, I'm still confused. We don't really own it, we have an easement on it, right? So really, the property owners on each side, owned to the center of the road, as I understand it, we just have the right to actually go across that.
You're right, okay.
So the liability, I'm not sure where it lies.
Well, I think, I think a lot of, a lot of the streets that have been taken by the town are in the form of an easement, but they are town right-of-ways. So I, I think the way that we, we approach it is that it's a responsibility of the town to maintain it and basically keep it as a public way.
So we obviously, as the process goes forward, that's something that is looked into by town council, any project of that type. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Does that answer that question that you had about the, you just gotta come back to the, to the microphone, because the people at home can't hear you?
I just wanted the people in town to know the extensive work that was done and the great job they did, and that there is no current erosion that relates to the beach. The erosion on the beach is specific to the river and the movement of the water back and forth. Last year, I went for a swim at this time of year. I kicked the sand on that flat plateau that scalloped out. That water was a vortex because of the groin that was put in. That's what's causing all of that sand, and as that current comes down through here and raises that sand, it drags it down and ends up at Scully's Beach. That's ongoing, that needs to be fixed. I have other things to say, but it's not, my position is, am I open to the floor here or?
Well, go ahead if you want to make your comment, yep, go ahead.
As I said, we have a longstanding issue with some of the deeded right issues in our neighborhood. We have a large group that I represent that is dead-set against this until we are guaranteed, as they did with the clubhouse and restricted our use on land that's deeded to us, that that doesn't happen down here. And again, we're all for the renourishment, but we have very serious concerns at how we're being treated, how we were described in our use of the beach, was described as immoral and unlawful, which is a total lie. So when that gets straightened out, maybe we can work together. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to comment on this matter? Again, noting that the, what is before the board tonight is whether or not the board gives permission for this project to go forward, to even be presented to conservation. Yes, sir, come on up, if you'd just introduce yourself, please?
David Smith from the.
You just gotta do it when you get up the mic.
David Smith, three ninety Edgewater Drive East. Like a lot of people in the room, I have a lot of passion for the beach. I was a young boy with my grandmother down at that beach, I have great memories of that. What I don't have is any memories of the beach that we once had at the south end of Seacoast Shores. And the reason for that is it's gone. If we don't move this forward and get this beach replenished, it'll be gone, just like that beach is gone. And so we would just ask you, please, to allow us to go through the process here. We want to work with our neighbors and develop a beach that everybody can be happy with, so appreciate the time.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, come on up, and then go here and then you, sir.
I'm Pat McDonald, I live on Winthrop Drive, Seacoast Shores, and I go down to the beach a couple of times a week. And it used to be I could walk from one side of the beach to the other side of the beach and not get my feet wet. But this past summer, I've gone down there, and you can't, you can't go from one side to the other. You, you come across this, this pool of water. So I'd like to see this beach replenished.
Thank you. Yes, sir, welcome.
Hi, I'm Richard Kelleher, I live at forty-nine Ellsworth Drive. From my perspective, you know, Seacoast is a very fragmented neighborhood. You know, there's, there's a lot of bad feelings between the, the association and the, and a good part of the rest of the neighborhood. You know, they champion themselves as the, you know, the stewards of the community, and they probably represent thirty or forty percent of, of the neighborhood. I personally am not opposed to re-nourishing the beach. I would like to see what the final thing would be before I form an opinion on, as to what the proposal for Bayside Drive. My fear is, from past experience, in the way things have taken place in the neighborhood, the loss of a community asset that only thirty or forty percent of the people in the community use, and the rest of us don't, and don't have access to it, you know, that creates the bad blood. And it's my fear that there's a backdoor to this thing where there's a loss of control over the use of the beach. Whether that fear is real or fancied, I don't know, it's just how I feel. But I also have a question regarding the drainage. Does, do those storm drains take the drainage from Bayside, you know, coming down the hill to, to that lower end? Do, you know, what happens with that water? You know, would this thing be able to, you know, take care of? Because I think those storm drains aren't just for that hundred feet of asphalt. I think that they take care of the drainage for the whole street.
Mr. McLaughlin, did you want to just address that piece?
And just reiterating that the storm, there's probably no, I don't want to speak out of school, because if it goes forward to CONCOM, they're gonna weigh in on this, but there's not, I, I don't think there's any scenario where the, the drainage is removed from this area. I mean, that's a key component of the work that this town, the town has done, and that's usually required in these kind of sensitive environments, but.
Right, I would expect not. As I mentioned, you know, the, the road drains down towards the, towards the water here. And so in addition to the area, that's, this is the first set of rocks, and then the, the second set here. In addition to the work that was done here in terms of abandoning the outfall and installing the leaching pits here, we also installed them here and here, so, and there's also some existing catch basins here. And if you drive down the street, you'll, you'll see those areas that are, you know, there's a big wide patch across the road where the catch basins connect into the, into those leaching basins. So the intent at the time that this was done back nearly ten years ago was to pick up all the water as it, as it's running down and prevent erosion out into the, into the water, and, and pick up all the surface water and discharge it into the ground.
Does that answer your question, sir, about the drainage?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir, come on up.
Bob Dunneho, four oh five Seacoast Shores. There are good people on both sides of this argument. I served on the beach committee and sat in countless hours of discussion. And although the concerns that are maybe coming out against it are important, they're not germane to the decision that you need to make tonight. We're asking you to just say, we're gonna let you go in front of CONCOM. All these things can get worked out, but it doesn't get worked out and the plan dies unless you vote to put us before CONCOM. And that's what we're asking. The rest of the stuff is all talk, but it doesn't get us to where we need to be. If it ends tonight, the whole thing ends tonight. I think that's imperative to really what we're asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Take a couple more comments, yes, sir, come on up. Okay, see you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Bob Kowaleski, I live at ten Ellsworth Drive in Seacoast Shores. This, the, the real issue of what the board needs to vote on tonight is whether there's gonna be work done on the end of Bayside Drive. We're all, all the people, all, all the residents of Seacoast Shores are in favor of replenishing the beach. And if that's what the association was proposing, I don't think we'd be here tonight. They'd just go to CONCOM, as they have in the past. CONCOM would review it and approve it. But what they want to do, what the association wants to do, is they want to tear up part of the road at the end of Bayside. And that part of the road right now serves many purposes. We all walk to the beach. The kids ride their bikes. There's a bike rack at the end where the pavement meets the beach. They park their bikes there. We put our wagons there that we pull the little kids in, or the big kids pull the little kids. There is handicapped access right now. In fact, it's probably better than what the association is proposing. For those reasons, I don't think we need to modify that section of Bayside at all. It serves its purpose as it is today. Doesn't need to be changed. So if you separate this into the two parts, the replenishment of the beach and the modifications to the end of Bayside, take the modifications of Bayside away. The selectmen don't even need to be involved. Just go to CONCOM, replenish the beach as they have in the past, and continue the process.
Thank you. Sir, come on up. And then, you, sir, in the house.
Jim Leiden, seventy-two Ellsworth Drive. And exactly what he was just saying about the beach, or the right-of-way right there at the beach. For the last two or three years, our group has put on a big cookout there. And the way that that is set up is perfect. Doesn't have to be changed. It just works out great. Everybody from, from Seacoast Shores is welcome to come to that cookout, free of charge, and it's a great time. I think what a lot of people and that, some of us in the, in, on Seacoast Shores that have been there for a long time had a bad experience at the beach a few years ago, where we were restricted. We weren't allowed to go and use our beach that we've had over all many years. And it came that the town had put a seasoned assist on it that allowed us back on the beach, where they had some security guard keeping us and our kids and our grandkids from using that beach, which isn't right. We've had that beach for years and years and years, we've had access to everything. And then it became that they had this big guy down there telling our grandkids, little kids like this, you can't use the beach, you gotta go home. That's what most of us that are left on that, that are on Seacoast Shores are relying on you people to do the right thing. And if it wasn't for you, we still probably wouldn't have been able to use that beach. And if, and we have to thank the selectmen for standing up for the rest of us on Seacoast Shores, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Yep, sir, and then if you just want to come up and stand alone, we'll take a few more comments and then we'll make a decision.
I'm wondering, I'm David Frawley, I'm three ninety-eight Edgewater Drive West. May, may I move the, the slide back to the presentation?
Oh, I don't know.
Is it still, is it still loaded?
While you're doing that, let me just state that we received, you know, number of emails from folks, the board has, I don't want to speak for everyone on this board, but it's generally the practice that pretty much everyone on this board reviews and reads all of those emails. So, you know, if you've sent one, we've read it, and, you know, there's quite a bit of input sort of on both sides of the, the equation. So I know, you know, we're hearing some reiteration of that, but we did read a lot of information coming in to tonight's meeting.
Thank you. I wanted to, somehow, we seem to have lost our way from the immediate agenda. The immediate agenda being the points of the improvement to an asset for Seacoast Shores that seems to be disappearing because of the force of nature. We're all agreed on that. Access, access, and, and I'm not sure that the ADA term has been used here yet, but the gentleman who preceded me said that there's excellent access to the beach. So in anticipation of this meeting tonight, I took a walk over to the beach, actually a bike ride, and I met my mother-in-law there, who lives directly across the street. She looks at this view. And she's eighty-four years old, she's legally blind, and she has a walker with some wheels on it. And we encourage her, when she goes across, to stay generally in this area over here. But being eighty-four years old and still rather independent, she likes to make her way down to the water. And so she's traversing, this is a, this is a legally blind woman traversing with a walker with wheels, this type of pavement and structure, and then going to an embankment that is just sand, down to the water. I think that the plan that the association has suggested and is asking the board of selectmen to approve to take the next step to conservation addresses that issue of access. She's eighty-four years old, we're hoping she'll be around for a few more years. We're hoping she'll have a much nicer access to the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mike Serra, 11 Oventon Drive. Just want to say I support replenishing the beach and the access plan. I have small children, just, I have, not like you guys, I haven't been here for a long time. I've been here about 18 months. But the association's been very welcoming to my family and my young children. And I'm here in Seaco Shores because the young families were a draw. The beach is a huge draw for us. And the access plan, I have a sister that's mentally retarded. She's handicapped and capable at times. And having this new plan to have her access down at the beach, which she can't use right now, would really, you know, help my family out. But I think the big thing is replenishing the beach for all the new small families. So many kids use that beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gordon Smith. I'm a full-time resident of Seaco Shores. My wife and I both work in the community. My wife is a PT with the VNA here in town, and I'm a physical therapist with Spalding and Sandwich. I just want to say that we support the association in these. I think it's going to better our community. It's, I think it's a good thing for the whole peninsula that we support the, that we support the association on this. And I just want to make sure that my voice is heard along with the people that are against it. Thank you.
Ma'am?
I'm Janet Demkowsky, 33 Noel Wood. And I'm new to the community. What I wanted to say was, if anybody's ever dragged down in a beach cart with beach paraphernalia, when you get down to that second row, it's all cracked asphalt. And I have witnessed a woman on the wheelchair and a walker just being able to get as far as the rocks and just sitting there wanting to get down further and not being able to. So, it's no handicap access at all. And not only not handicap access, but it's not even good access for us to get down onto the beach when you have a beach cart.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, Kelly Durficardoza, 216 Edgewater Drive West. We've only been here for seven years. One of the big attractions for us was the beach. My mom is kind of 80. If I'd said how old she was, she'd kill me, but, you know, she needs two new knees. It's never going to happen. And if we can get access down right now, it takes like four people to get her to the beach. And then she can stand in the water and she can enjoy that. But that's really important. We'd love to see the beach replenished, but we also need to be able to make use of it. And I readily support this plan.
Thank you. Sir?
Got kind of lost in some of these things here. Stephen Covell, 79 Seaco. Did we not start this with a request for a transfer of easement?
No.
No.
There was no question.
Not, that's not an issue.
Well, the five-year fight has been over access. That's what's divided into two homeowners groups. And all through this has been arguments, email circles, saying there will be no money spent without ownership and control. And the secondary group just wants to guarantee that there will not be any give-up of the public access. Because there is a lot of public access issues there, as you said, by not just their members, the other members, but general public goes down there. They launch boats and everything. There's fishing morning and night. And there's signs saying not to do such. And it's public access. It is not a private beach. But there are signs saying no use. So, we just don't want to go back and start a five-year argument over again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, final comment, you, sir, and then this will be the final comment. No, you can come up, yes?
Tom Griffin, 30, Edgewater Drive East. I basically am not opposed at all to the replenishment of the beach. I mean, I've had a mooring on the river for 27 years, owned my house for 23 years. I have just one question I'd like to get. Are you absolutely committed?
Well, if you would just ask the question through me and we can ask for a follow-up, please.
All right. An absolute commitment that a non-Seaco Shores member of a clubhouse is going to be denied access to the beach?
Well, we can answer the question for you because it's.
You said that, yeah.
Yeah.
It's public, so it cannot be denied.
Correct.
We made sure of it five years ago. We'll make sure of it in the next five years. There's public easement that requires that.
Yes, sir.
John Bartonelli Jr., Edgewater Drive East. I support the plan to let Seaco Shores form an improvement here. DPW's been very reliable and very helpful. And every time they come down to Seaco Shores, they keep working at it until there's a solution. They don't have the time, money, or incentive to form the solution that Seaco Shores proposes down here. Thank you very much.
Okay, so thank you for everybody's comments, all your emails. And a huge thank you for folks just for being respectful and letting everybody be able to be heard clearly without any interruption. What is, is there any comment or thoughts from this board?
Two comments I'd make. One is I think on the improvement to the road, I leave that up to the Conservation Commission to make their recommendations as to, they do consider access. They consider what's going to be best for the environment. And I think they'll make their recommendations based on that. I don't think we have the power to break it apart. We can either submit the plan as given or say no. And I certainly think the, there are some improvements to that road that would be a better access. And I think the replenishment of the beach makes sense. So, I would be in favor of having to go forward and trust the Conservation Commission to hear these things and know what's going to come back to us. And I just will reiterate again, access to that beach will not be denied. And I will do everything I can as a selectman to make sure that the public access is maintained as we did when we ordered the cease and desist five years ago.
Second.
And just further to that point before we make the vote, just to remind everyone, I know this is something people are aware of, but when conservation, if they, you know, when they're holding their hearings on this, those are going to be public and they're going to be taking input again. So, there's another opportunity to really specifically speak to the details of a project in a way that's not before this board tonight. This board is really just sort of the gatekeeper of this process going forward. All those details are going to be vetted and looked at in detail by conservation, probably on a number of occasions. And everybody from the community is welcome to weigh in on that.
And they can change the, every aspect of the plan.
Yes, you could.
Correct, okay. So, I have a motion and a second to allow the plan to move forward to go to conservation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you to everyone who shared your thoughts tonight. We appreciate it. I might just give a two-minute break to let folks just exit the room. I know that a lot of folks here are for this, so return for two minutes.
All right, we'll get started to finish up our agenda for this evening. Next, we have a request for sign variance off-premise promotional flags on Main Street, Cape Cod Marathon, Fem Track Club. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Jack O'Ferry, and I'm the race director for the Cape Cod Marathon. And I'm looking for permission to hang pole banners similar to what we did last year. I sent you a letter about this. There's a clarification I need to make to that letter. I said that the DPW was going to help us place the pole banners on the light posts. I've been informed that they don't have personnel to do that. But they would give us any equipment that we need to do it. They did half of it last year. We did the other half. We know how to put them up. So, I don't see that as an issue for us. But I just wanted to make you aware that that's what the situation is.
Okay, great. Mr. Suso, did you just want to weigh in?
Yeah, I'm not certain who provided that clarification, but, you know, I just wanted to advise Jack that we do have personnel in Public Works that can handle this. And from a liability standpoint, we really do not want to have third parties putting up and taking down banners on these town light poles. As was noted last year, we had unauthorized individuals were removing them and caused great concern for Public Works. So, the suggestion is that Public Works personnel would install banners and remove them. However, it would be done after hours so that it does not detract from their field maintenance duties and their other duties, as the board is fully aware, that are considerable, particularly this time of year. And that the benefiting entity, in this case, the Cape Cod Marathon, would put a payment in place for the town to pay for that, the after-hours work by the Public Works crews to both install and remove. And where we're coming from on this is that absent this, what we're doing is creating a brand-new function for Public Works, which is going to take a crew over many, many events potentially out of service from their normal work. And so, from the get-go, we need to be cautious that, number one, from a liability standpoint, it really needs to be town employees that are erecting these and removing them. And number two, we would have it be done after hours so that they're not pulled away from field maintenance and tree trimming and other kinds of road and highway work that is their basic responsibility.
Do you know what type of price tag that is?
Yeah, we received an estimate. It was $598.
It's a precedent. I would much rather go with what you're suggesting than either having non-town people touching the poles or just assuming that the town can always pay and afford to do it themselves.
You may be hearing that number for the $598 number for the first time. Just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
I am, I am just hearing it for the first time.
And do you think that's something that's a number that your organization can?
If we need to do that, we can do that. Our main purpose is to make sure we get the banners up there. It does a lot for the town. It makes it a lot more festive type of event on Main Street. Everybody who comes here likes seeing it. The whole atmosphere around the race with other flags that we put up on race weekend just made the whole event that much more festive for everybody involved. And what's happening is, because we're doing some of these things, we're doing a number of other things for the race also. And our registration has just gone sky-high this year because of all the good things we're doing. And that's just one piece of it. So, my main concern is that we can still have the banners up.
I hope not above the numbers that we've approved.
I'm sorry?
I hope the registration isn't above the numbers.
Nope, nope.
The number we had last year was some events, I think with the marathon, that were not approved, that were done and created great problems with parking. With the.
With the challenges in the heights.
And also in the church.
Yeah, and we've worked all those out with the church.
Well, I guess, you've gotten me a little worried with all of a sudden the numbers are going way up.
It's not even close to what our limit is.
I know, but it means it's going to be bigger than it was. And last year it was big and problematic. And now it's going to be bigger. It just means more likely more problems. And so, maybe the banners are going to create more problem if we're going to, all of a sudden, be increasing this even more. So, I guess I'm leaning more and more, absolutely, the DPW's busy enough and the marathon need to be paying for this, not the town.
Oh, I think, I mean, my position would be regardless of the numbers, I think because we are now seeing so many more events, which is great, in that shoulder season, you know, I'm anticipating that, you know, you guys did a nice job. The banners looked great. Last year, I've already seen some up. I think there's one at Crab Apples or something like that.
Yes, yeah, there is one at Crab Apples.
And so, you know, I think this board, what we're anticipating, we're kind of addressing two things, which is the facts that are specific to this, which is exactly what we heard. This is a big season for DPW because it's nice weather and it's not summer. So, there's so many projects that they can work on that need to get done that they have a small window for. So, to take the time to do it during regular hours, it is taking away from other activities that the taxpayers have paid for. And then the other piece is we definitely, you know, we certainly can't have, as careful as people might be, we can't have, you know, regular individuals who are non-town employees affixing things to town, to town property. So, I guess my bigger issue is just making sure we sort of set a little bit of a policy, although we're not voting on anything, but that, you know, more events might like to do what you're doing and might come before this board to try and put those up. Because I think you're correct, they do make a festive atmosphere. They do make the people who, much like what they do for the road race, they do make the people who come into town or who come for the day or for the weekend to participate feel like they're part of a true event.
What signs up already?
There's a sign up at Crab Apples.
Is that within our sign code?
I think it's probably.
It's in private property.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I don't know.
If it's on public roadway.
Let's not go there. We're not enforcers.
Well, so, there would, I mean, there is a town agency that would be enforcing that. So, I'm just noting that I had seen one there. So, I guess I would be in favor of, it's not an enormous amount of money. It seems reasonable for what we're asking DPW to do. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about.
I think it's important, precedent established. I think it's, I think we should make it a policy, really, that whenever, you know, any group, be it charitable or commercial, comes to town and wants to put up flyers, there has to be a review process to decide, or banners, a review process to decide whether we think it's actually going to be aesthetically pleasing for the general public. But I think they also have to pay for the setup and taking down of those banners. And we probably need to think about having some money up front before they're allowed to do it so we don't end up with banners flying. This is not disparaging the marathon. But to make sure that they actually get taken down or that they're paying for taking them down actually occurs before they go up. So, maybe paying in advance.
That's what we would be requesting.
Yeah, it's important. Then we can control that.
I would not object to that.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
So, move.
Second?
I guess.
Want to address any other issues that you had about the?
I guess I really am concerned about people putting up signs without our permission. And it bothers me that they're supposed to.
Court of order. That's not there. Well, if it's a problem, speak to them and see if they'll correct it. I know you're saying because it is, particularly the marathon. But I don't think this is, this shouldn't be the time that we bring up an enforcement issue. That's my.
Well, I would just say, you're before us. You hear the concern that even if it's private property, a sign really, for a special event, really does need to come before the board to put up a sign for a period of time. So, you're hearing that concern.
That's essentially because it's an off-premise sign.
Right.
Right.
Okay, but.
I'm sorry, so what type of sign?
Off-premise sign. In other words, it's a third party placing a sign on whether it's private property or public property that is not their own premises.
And if it were private property, they'd be limited to one sign. I mean, we have a whole sign code that, I guess, Sam, it's probably not the right time, but the number of our sign codes that are now ignored all the time with the number of. number of sandwich boards that are put up on Main Street all over the place, and our sign enforcement officer doesn't have the time to be able to enforce it all.
True.
So you're hearing the concern about that, so.
Understood.
And also just Doug's concern about just that proactive, which sounds like you're doing already, proactive work to kind of manage the number and the flow of people for this event, which is a great event. So I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, so you can just work with the town and you'll be able to have those put up, okay?
DPW with you?
What would be the next step that you would like...
Who do I work with to make this happen?
You can stop by our office or give us a call, Jack, and we'll work with Public Works to get that scheduled, whenever we get the information on details about when the banners are available, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I'll stop by your office.
Sounds good.
Will we just ask one question before Jack goes? Do we need to vote on, never mind, I see that, I see you've asked for a date of October 10 and ending October 31st. Okay, so is that included in our vote?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have vote to form a subcommittee of two selectmen to review and request the name, to name the emergency operations center, the Paul D. Broder Emergency Operations Center. Mr. Suso, did you just want to address what we had back there?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The selectmen's policy on naming of facilities requires, as you, I know you all recall, a one-year waiting period. That period has elapsed for this current proposal, and the policy then dictates that two members of the board of selectmen would be named as a subcommittee to review the proposal and make a recommendation to the group, which certainly could come at your, you know, your next meeting or two, whenever the board is prepared to take that up.
Great.
I'd be willing to help with that.
Okay.
Can I just clarify what the policy says? Is that the subcommittee holds a public hearing? Is that what you're reading of the procedure, or that the board of selectmen holds a public hearing?
I think we just investigate if there's been any opposition to the naming.
Well, the language says, says hold a public hearing. And I'm just wondering, it seems a little bit awkward for a subcommittee and two selectmen to do so.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that would essentially be the board getting the report from the subcommittee and giving the public the opportunity to make comments as well. I know it says public hearing, but I think that was sort of a misnomer. I was not here when the policy was adopted, but I think it's more of a public meeting. So in other words, whenever Megan, as board selectman chair, determines that there is a report to come from the subcommittee that's appointed tonight, then she would affirm that it would go on the agenda. We would agendize it, notify the public to come and give them the opportunity to comment on that, not necessarily advertise a formal hearing like we would for a shellfish permit or something like that.
But done by the board, not by the...
Yes, done by the board, that would be what I would envision.
Okay.
I was on the one when we did the Marx Building, I believe it was, and we just went around and found out the plaque where it was going to go and if it was appropriate and asked as many people as we could for opinions on it.
Okay, great. Okay, so we need to vote?
We've got one volunteer.
Yep, we have Mr. Brown.
I'll have to work with Mr. Brown.
Okay, all right. So I have a motion for a subcommittee to be comprised of Doug Jones and Doug Brown to review the request to the name the emergency operations center after Paul Broder.
Second, if nobody else is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I need to accuse myself from the next issue.
Okay, we have vote to affirm appointment, I'll just wait, I'll speak slowly, appointment of Annie Dean as historical commission representative to the community preservation committee. We are all familiar with Ms. Dean and her commitment to the town and her qualifications. Does anyone have any questions or a motion?
I move that we approve the appointment of Annie Dean to the community preservation committee.
I think it's a term that ends June 30th, 2021.
Thank you.
Second, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All of us that are here? Aye, gentlemen. You can come back and...
You can come back, yep, Doug.
She didn't make it.
Yes. We have meetings for public session August 5th, 2019, and August 19th, 2019. Any corrections? I know, Sam, you had...
I just had a, you know, a couple of minor things. Let's see, I'm sorry, you talked about August 5th?
August 5th, we'll start with August 5th.
Hold on a second. No, I don't think, actually, I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay.
That's the next...
I'd move approval of the August 5th minutes.
Do you have a second? Mr. Brown?
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Abstain, I wasn't here.
August 19th, excuse me.
Yes, just two minor corrections on page, this page, page six, just the spelling of Bill Dynan's last name. It's, it shouldn't be Dylan, it's D.Y.N.A.N., I believe is the correct.
Yes.
Yep, I think you're right.
And then on the, what was it? On page 11, in the middle of the page where it claims Ms. English Braga will look at potential spots where it would be appropriate for Northwest Station, I don't think she's going to do it, so I suggest we edit to Ms. English Braga indicated the study will look at potential spots, so just inserting indicated this study will. And with that, I would move approval with those edits and release to the public.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Executive session of August 5th, I know that you need to, Sam, stand here.
I was absent, I'm abstaining, but I did review, I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other, any, Doug or Doug?
I don't see them, I didn't see them in the packet.
Maybe I don't have them in my packet.
But I have it.
You do?
Yeah.
It should have been in your hard copy, sorry about that.
This is the executive session of Monday, August 5th, correct? Anybody want to look at?
Sure. Why don't we, you know, why don't we put these over to our next meeting?
Okay.
And can we just make sure, because it looks like a couple, I definitely don't have this in my packet.
Okay.
It actually has a red stamp on it, so there's a good chance that I got the only copy.
Chance that this is the only copy. May I give this to Mr. Suso, so you remember to...
By all means.
Thank you.
It isn't the email that I received.
Okay. All right, so we can just put it over, you have it?
Yep.
Let's put it over, because Sue isn't here, so that way...
I took copies of it.
Oh, great.
Okay.
We'll put that one over so that we can, okay. Individual segment reports.
Well, I, last week went to a dinner at the Wookway Foundational Church for Safe Plates, it was a fundraiser for AIDS group of Cape Cod, and it was very well attended. The place was filled and plus outside seating was filled. And Dan Gates was there to speak about their progress. They put a deposit down on their mobile van, they signed a lease for their property where they're going to be relocating their office to, so they're still moving forward. We haven't heard much from them lately, but they're still moving forward. I also attended YMCA legislative lunch up in Hyannis at the YMCA facility, and they're still moving forward also, and they're this close to signing an agreement for a piece of land in Falmouth, still undisclosed where, because it's still in negotiation. And they're still partnered with Falmouth Aquatics, and so it looks like it will still happen here in Falmouth. And they were making mention of the childcare program is just taking off. It's really a huge program across Cape Cod. And they're also responsible for bringing the summertime free lunch over there at the East Falmouth School, which is a really great program, filling a big need. So I'm impressed with their organization and I'm really excited about them coming to Falmouth. Then also, we attended the Falmouth Fund 10-year anniversary, and geez, what a great group that is, too. They've done a lot of work, they've given out $600,000 to various organizations in Falmouth over their 10-year history. So that was fun, it's always a nice event when you go to the Woods Hole Golf Club. And I also attended the Coastal Residency Action Committee meeting this past week, and they're designing their plan to study surf drive beach noun vulnerability assessment and just looking at the general ecosystem services aspect of the immediate shoreline. And they've determined that this study will be narrowly focused on the beach and not include Main Street, and that would have to be a separate study. So, I mean, that's their, that's their take on it. I was a little surprised, I thought maybe the whole reason to figure out if you want to protect the beach was if you want to protect your town, but I guess it'll be taken in two steps. So that's it for me for this week.
Two events, I mentioned already, was the ribbon cutting for the high school multi-sport stadium. Doug was there, enjoyed it, and he actually did the ribbon cutting, got a chance to make a few comments. But it was nice to see the football field, the football team run out on the field and start their practice, so we got to witness that. And then, of course, we started off the competitive season by beating Dartmouth 35-14, so...
Good, good way to start.
Yeah, it's a nice way to...
Crisp in the field, right?
Crisp in the field, exactly right. The second thing, on the same day, on the 27th, was a meeting with the, attending the meeting of the Falmouth, excuse me, Friends of Knobsko Board of Meeting. And I could mention that they actually now have signed a contract with Delbrook Corporation to begin the restoration of the keepers' houses. And so as a result, of course, the property is going to be under the control of the contractor for a good long time, until they finish that work. It's just the first phase, it's just the outside envelope to kind of get it environmentally sound before they finish the fundraising that's really needed to be able to start working on the inside of the housing. But at least that's a step in the right direction, and hats off to the board for its diligent work in doing the fundraising, because it's such an important Falmouth icon. But that's worked moving on. Look, I don't know that there's any resolution as to whether we'll be able to do Christmas by the sea as we've traditionally done for as long as I've lived in Falmouth, there at the light, but the light itself has already been restored, so it's possible that we'll be able to eke out enough space there to have that community event still.
But it should be outdoors.
It'll be, oh yeah, well, it has always been outdoors, except for the cocoa served in the house, which that will not happen.
Great, thank you. All I wanted to announce is just that for Monday, September 16th, initially we were going to have a joint meeting with planning board and hear jointly about, hear from Water Quality Management Committee about the CWMP. Am I getting that right? Okay.
Correct.
Lots of acronyms. But what we are going to do instead is we're going to still hear from Water Quality about that obviously very important issue, so we can hear their presentation, start to weigh in, because we are on a timetable for that particular issue, and to have final recommendations and a final plan approved really by the end of this year. So that's going to, that time period is going to fly by with town meeting. So we will still hear that presentation. I do believe planning has determined that they will attend as a board or number of their members, as will a number of other boards. We've invited really a whole host of boards and individuals from the town, from the various departments, to really see this initial presentation and be able to make any comments and give any feedback that they wish to Water Quality Management as they take those comments and sort of re-craft and transform that plan. So we will be meeting just as a board on Monday, but it will be in the Herman Room. So the place of that meeting still hasn't changed, we still need that large enough venue to really have the public and boards and committees that wish to attend to do so. So it'll still be in the Herman Room, it'll be at 7:00 PM rather than that earlier start, because we're not going to do the joint meeting component at the beginning, which is what we were going to do initially, carve out that hour and a half, two-hour period for a joint meeting and then move into it. It's just going to be our own meeting, and we will find another date in order to schedule a joint meeting with the planning board. So that's really at the request of planning board, we want to honor that, but we obviously, we don't want to delay in hearing this presentation, which is critical.
Right.
So just, an agenda obviously will be forthcoming, but I just wanted to note, you know, that that'll be a slight tweak to it, but we'll still be hearing that important presentation. And I do believe we'll be getting documents, already have, in advance of that for us to review, so we're ready to really dive in to that, to the presentation and have some substantive discussion. Okay? Any...
If you want, so we can have that joint meeting at the senior center, right?
Yes, exactly.
In their new space.
We can christen that space with our joint meeting.
I'm sorry, I was not able to make it to the Steamship Authority hearing that they had the high school today at four. But I did wonder if we could pursue with our representative two questions with the Steamship. One is about the use of Railroad Avenue to load their boat. I know that they're using a third slip and they're cutting off the road to be able to back their trucks on it, and I'm surprised that was part of their plan. And the second is to whether they're going to come back with the building design. I thought when they came to us...
Well, they are working on actually a pretty significant redesign, and they're considering some really drastic options of a second building. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I met with Catherine Wilson last week or the week before, and she had some conceptual drawings of a really very small building in the same location, which will only be for tickets only and no services for any of the employees. And employee services moved to that second building, where it's now proved to be possible to do their waste oil storage and their stuff that they need to do, their mechanical stuff, can be in the same building as personnel issues, as long as there's proper protections and stuff put in place. So they are giving a lot of really creative ideas, some thought, so I'm hoping that that will come forward.
I still hope that they'll come back to us with a presentation for that.
Yep.
Maybe that answers that question.
So maybe we can just, I know we had another...
They have been invited?
Yes.
And I'm awaiting confirmation. Megan had asked that I reach out to them.
Okay.
And I did reach out to the executive director and also Catherine, and they indicated they'll be getting back to me. They may be working on the details of Doug's describing now, prior to doing that, so we're hopeful to have that at a date in the, not in the very near future.
Great. Mr. Suso?
Yes. Recently met with Chamber of Commerce President Michael Kasperian to discuss and review some downtown municipal parking options and alternatives. And this is in further into the work I've been doing with Tom Bottom, others, and exploring significant, short-term, as I would call them, options for expanding the much-needed municipal parking downtown. This would, of course, require authorization to enter into a lease or purchase of property for such a purpose. And our challenge is to respond when the opportunity presents itself, and I look forward to a further discussion of this in preparation with selectmen, potentially for November town meeting. I also recently met with school superintendent Lori Dorr to review multiple items of mutual interest and concern. And as we all know, Falmouth School successfully began their current term this, earlier this past week. And it was also my pleasure to attend the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new all-purpose athletic field at the high school. And they, as noted, they successfully kicked off their season in spite of the rain this past Friday night. A reminder to all, the annual 911 ceremony will be this Wednesday, September 11th, and we encourage everyone to gather by 9:45 AM at the fire headquarters on Main Street, because that ceremony is traditionally brief, but begins just shortly after 9:45 AM. And Chief Dunn has indicated that he'll be blocking off that section of Main Street for safety purposes, as was the case last year, because as we know, the crowd tends to spill over the sidewalk and into the street, so we want to accommodate everyone who wishes to attend. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Congressman, great.
I hope everyone can turn up for that wounded warrior ride Thursday.
Yes. Have a motion to adjourn, do you have a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.